...to order, please, for Tuesday the fifteenth of October.
I'm not hitting.
Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Moy.
Here.
Councilmember Tim.
Here.
Vice Mayor Bertani.
Here.
Sorry, my template's kind of messed up. Councilmember Vicaro.
Here.
And Mayor Price.
Here. And the invocation this evening will be led by William Limnios, Fairfield Fire Department Chaplain, and Grace Family Church Pastor.
I never remember to push that, sorry. Okay. Um, I've been thinking a lot this week about just being thankful. Um, I know it's not Thanksgiving yet, but, um, we have a lot to be thankful in our country, in our city. And then today I was reading, and I read First Thessalonians five eighteen that says, "Give thanks in everything, for this is God's will for you in Christ Jesus." And then nineteen says, "Don't quench the spirit." And I think sometimes we tend to complain a lot, and we can do that. We can quench the spirit, and we don't want to do that. Now, I realize telling people not to complain at a council meeting's probably not a great idea. That probably happens a lot. But we can at least focus on the things that we have, and we can be thankful. So, if you would, pray with me. Heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you so much for all the blessings that you've bestowed upon us. Thank you for our city council that serves. Thank you for all the departments and how they serve the city. Uh, Lord, thank you for our families. Lord, we just love you, and we thank you. Lord, I pray for the meeting tonight. Help everybody to be civil and, uh, to get along. Thank you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Good luck.
Thank you, Pastor. And the Pledge of Allegiance this evening will be led by the Vice Mayor.
.....................................................................
Counsel reports, please. Councilman Vicaro, would you like to lead off with your report, please?
Sorry, Mr. Mayor. I was getting the card. Uh, thank you. You know, I'm just gonna skip the report and just welcome everybody. It's always great to see a packed house. Means people in our city care, so, um, welcome, everybody.
And Councilman Tim, please.
Mayor, the same thing. We got a packed agenda, and hopefully we can get out of here before midnight. The only thing I wanted to say, though, was to city staff, fire police, uh, on the emergency operations center with PG&E shutdown, you folks did a remarkable job, and I just want to say thanks. Mayor?
Thank you. They really did. Counsel...Moy, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'm gonna keep it short to follow on what Councilman Tim had to say. Um, I'm thankful for also all the residents. Uh, you all did the very best with what was happening. Um, our staff, our city, our city manager made sure that, uh, we had backups for this city, so we ensured that your water kept running. And it was a major price tag. And so, um, I've already spoken to city manager about this, and I'm...I've asked him to get us all the costs, um, overtime costs, everything, um, what we had to prepare for this, and to send PG&E a bill, uh, for it. I don't think the taxpayers should have to pay for those things. Um, I think, uh, bottom line is, uh, PG&E and its friendliness, um, with, uh, a lot of people who make our laws, and, um, it makes for an ugly situation. And, um, I just think that, you know, there are lines, I know. I've read a lot about this, studied a lot about it. And what irritates me is that there are lines up there that are about a hundred years old that were never repaired or maintained. And so, then they want to put it all on us. Forty billion dollars' worth of lawsuits against them, and we, the taxpayers, are gonna pay for half of that with increased rates. And what do they get? They're getting big multimillion-dollar, um, little chunks of money, all of the big leaders there. Um, and for the PG&E, uh, people who just work for PG&E, you know, I thank them, 'cause they bear a big burden, too. And it wasn't their fault that the, um, the big dudes on top took advantage of their place in life. And, um, I, you know, these guys were found to be felons, um, not individually, but PG&E. And frankly, uh, I don't think we should be paying for that. I think they should have to pay for it. So, um, I asked the city manager and one of my colleagues, and I wanted mostly for you all to know that, um, that I'm looking, we probably all will, but I'm looking for PG&E to pay us back for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, everyone, for coming out this evening. Thanks for watching from home. It is always a better city council meeting when we have a full house like we do tonight. So, welcome, everyone. I am gonna let that be my remarks this evening, so we can get to work. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And I'll make mine very brief, too. A group of veterans created what they call the Ambassadors of Music, and they perform three times a...four times a year over at Veterans Hall in Sussin City, and they come from...along with their spouses, they come from a variety of church choirs, and it's free. And it goes from one to three o'clock in the afternoon on Friday. The next one will be on December twentieth, and they also provide lunch. And then, colleagues, I'd like to share with you this email that I received last week. My name is Kayla Washington, and I'm a Commissioner on the City of Fairfield Youth Commission. The Commissioners and I express an interest in having a liaison person present during the upcoming interviews for new Commissioners. As a Commissioner, we believe it's imperative that we have a say about who the individuals are who will be working alongside us. We'd like to ensure that future Commissioners are committed to individuals who will work effectively with current members to meet our collective goals. Please consider allowing at least one present Commissioner to serve on the selection board. And I make the motion that we agree. Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah. Yep. Thank you very much. Mr. City Manager, your report, please.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. I also wanted to commend staff for what they did when the PG&E power shut off. A lot of pre-planning work went into this, as you know. We talked to you quite a bit about what we were doing to pre-plan this, including getting a generator for our water treatment plant for one of them, which we used, and came in handy. Um, but we opened our emergency operating center, um, which we do when we have emergencies, and this is a great planning experience for us. And I want to compliment the three people in particular. Matt Lukenbach from the Fire Department, who actually spent the night at the fire station to make sure everything would go okay, um, and Josiah Jacobson from the Police Department, and Jeremy Prophet from Parks and Rec, who basically, the three of them handled all the media inquiries and put together all the information that kept the residents and staff and all of you informed during the power blackout. So, the entire...uh, we also went on twelve-hour shifts in public works to make sure we could handle the work volume. So, I was very proud of what everybody did through that, and I wanted to compliment them. Also, our IT department division created a...an app for cellphones, so when staff was out in the field, they could actually, using the GPS on their phone, uh, put it in there where an area was out of...out of power, and so we had had real-time information. Then they got to translate the information, went back to the EOC so they could map it. And so, they developed that app on the spot and got it done, taken care of. So, um, kudos to IT also. So, it was a great event. We'll be debriefing the event this Thursday. You always learn from these experiences, so we'll be debriefing it and see what we can do better next time. Uh, one other quick thing I have is Lorraine Kennedy, who works in Parks and Rec, just was recognized with a very big award. She got the Spotlight on Quality Award from the Department of Education, State of California. It's a very big honor, and Lorraine's been with the city for twenty-eight years and eleven months. It'll be twenty-nine years in November, and I just wanted to, um, say congratulations to Lorraine, and great job for, uh, for her, and great job for Parks and Rec. And I have nothing else on the agenda. There's no changes. There'll be some changes when we get a couple of items, but nothing right now.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, your report, please.
I don't have a report this evening. Thank you.
Presentations. And our first presentation, Madam Clerk.
First presentation is Outreach and Engagement Portal, and our presenter is Parks and Rec... Parks and Recreation Director Anne Matola.
Good evening, Mayor Price, and members of the council. Jeremy's gonna set this up while I introduce this project. It's, um, something pretty awesome that we're able to share with you this evening. It's a new online communications portal called We Are Fairfield. It'll be wearefairfield.com, and it was developed to better inform and engage the community with the work that's being done to improve the quality of life for the residents of Fairfield. The port...the portal was a collaborative effort of the Parks and Recreation Department, the Police Department, and the Quality of Life Division. This team has been working to develop the site since council approved, um, a design cap...contract with the Design Guild earlier this year. They helped us build and design the site. So, with eighty-nine percent of Americans using smartphones and the Internet to get their information, we thought that we should start trying to do something to meet the people where they are, on their cellphones. This is fully optimized for mobile devices. We also are gonna use this device. It's gonna be kind of a workforce amplifier for us, because this will help us efficiently put...push out message...messaging to the variety of social media channels that we all use as well. Um, I said this was a team effort, but Jeremy Prophet has been the project manager for this, so I'm gonna have him come up and walk you through the site.
Good evening, Mayor, council, and city manager. Thank you. It's a privilege to be here to...to share this work, uh, which was a...definitely a collaborative effort, so we could not do it without all of us. So, really, uh, what this portal is, besides delivering a lot of awesomeness, is a place to increase awareness on programs, services, outreach, and ways for our community to connect with our city. Um, another piece, which is, um, a heart and soul that I believe is engagement. Um, this portal will allow our citizens, our community members, to engage with us as we share information. Um, it helps build pride in our community, trust and awareness within the community, increasing participation, and contributes to strengthening our quality of life throughout our community. So, I'm gonna give you a walkthrough. Really, this is built on visual, easy to navigate, and really expressing the diversity of our community, so you'll see as these pictures rotate through three of them. It's important to us to share what...who our community is, so you'll see a diverse group of young children, um, adults, all engaged throughout the city, and, um, our, um, public safety also, which is really important to share that. Um, so, we have these categories at top, which I'm gonna click on to. Community life. It'll take a second. And again, everything is very visual. So, we have our first category that I'll walk you through is people. This gives us the opportunity to share the pride of our, um, staff in giving service to our community, um, and also the pride of our community members themselves. So, you'll see you have Roy Sierra, youth-focused article. Um, you have Powell. Um, so, really, this is a collection of...of information that you could share about the pride and work that our staff are doing throughout the city of Fairfield, and the engagement that our community is presenting throughout Fairfield to make who we are, as we are Fairfield. The next...next category under, um, community life is businesses. So, this is a...a resource page to share the thriving businesses throughout the city of Fairfield, and resources such as economic development could share resources on business assistance and other ways that businesses would come to Fairfield. So, it's another great place to share information and stories, and promote stuff such as the Downtown Theater, uh, our Farmers Market, the Downtown, uh, Main Street Association, and other facts about our businesses that are thriving throughout the city of Fairfield. The next...next one, which is really important, is...is called Doing Good, and this is about organizations throughout our city that are supporting, um, and doing great things throughout our city, and also ways to get involved. So, city programs such as Adopt a Street, um, other ways to volunteer throughout the city through the city, our Youth Commission, uh, Apply for Measure P Commission, Powell. And then we also, under Organizations, will be able to highlight the Powell Program, the Fairfield Community Services Foundation, and all the wonderful work that they have done with us. And another one of the community life is called About Fairfield. So, there's three different categories. We have Community Resources, which is really important to highlight a lot of different resources that our city provides to our community. We have Fire Prevention, uh, Free Notary Services, the Adult Recreation Center, Homeless Outreach Resources, and Family Violence Unit. So, this is only gonna grow. All this stuff will grow. This is just basic, uh, stuff that we've provided currently, so this will continue to grow. Getting to Know Fairfield. This is information, the history of Travis Air Force Base. Uh, we're also partnering with Visit Fairfield, so we could share their information, another way of getting more information out there. This is Announcements. So, announcements could be a lot of different things. It could be press releases, important information such as Help Shape, um, and I'll open this. So, they're blog-based. So, this is Help Shape our Council Election Districts. So, this is information in Spanish and English and other languages that we could share on this platform. And this is all the information, but what is really cool and, uh, what we're excited about is the engagement piece. So, in this comment section, which I'll walk you through at the end, you register, you could provide comments and get instant feedback between the person that manages that area. So, if this is quality of life, that will be, um, under Don LaBarre, or if it's Parks and Rec, or do myself, and so forth. So, you'll get engagement back and forth to answer additional questions, um, so we could help navigate our community through the...the resources and get more information. Engagement is very important with involvement in this piece. The next one, which I'm really excited about, is our calendar. So, these are city events, which I'll click on. Again, everything is very visual. It should be loading. So, everything is driven behind...this is our city calendar. So, we have Fire Prevention Week, which is now the twenty-fourth. So, we...we're able to provide pictures, information, date, time, and a really cool feature is I could upload this to my phone or computer on the exact location, and it'll send me a calendar invite, and it also should me...send me to the location. So, it's really user-friendly on your phone, mobile device, or your computer. We also have Around Town, which is organizations such as the Downtown Main Street Association, Powell, the Theater Downtown, and we could share all the wonderful things that are happening Our third category, obviously, is Delivering Awesome, and it talks a lot about our community programs through Parks and Recreation, and places and spaces, so we can highlight all the wonderful things that is going on, revitalizing parks, and all the great development that is going on. Public Safety. This can be police, fire, this could be anything to do with public safety. Serving our community is one of our categories. This talks about, again, Powell, the outreach, um, through Top the Cops event. So, again, sharing information, uh, coffee with the cops. All these posts, you could communicate and ask additional questions or engage. Keeping Us Informed. This talks about, uh, how to participate in Neighborhood Watch, and...and other focuses, uh, the PSP shutdown information, helpful information to distribute through there. Last one is Connect. So, besides, um, engaging on every one of these articles, you can also go to this page, put in your first name, last name, email address, and click one of these departments. Again, this is able to grow. All of this is really a strong foundation, and to grow and thrive, um, in sharing information throughout the entire city. Um, so you could click on one of these, and these will go directly to the person in charge of one of these departments, so they could send a response back. Uh, we could also share all our social media platforms, and it gives you direct contacts to us and our phone numbers and email. So, another way that our community doesn't have to try to navigate and find real people to connect and get their information, we're trying to provide this easier. NICSOL under PD, Police Department, is also there. So, we'll have our NICSOL alerts. Sorry about the mouse. So, as, um, our community signs up, this is what it will look like from a user end. So, everybody has to register. Sorry about that. It's not logging out. Sign out. So, as a community member comes here and they want to chime in or add comments or ask questions, every user has to register with their first name, last name, and email address, and then it gives you, um, rules to abide by. No abusive language, and so on and so forth. And you hit submit, and they'll also get...this will also roll them into receiving newsletters for this information. And this is all really a...a strong foundation. Again, I can't express enough that we can continue to grow using all of our departments to share information. Any questions?
Thank you, Harry. Um, my question is just, who...who's going to oversee this?
Very good question. So, I will be the content manager, so I'll be working, and we're providing training with all the departments. They will be collecting...getting the stories, and they'll be sent to me, and I'll manage and post those. So, I'll be managing as the content manager.
Okay, yeah. I...I mean, I just have concerns, because I've, um, heard from a lot of people, um, and this probably doesn't have anything to do with you specifically, but on our...on my Fairfield app, people are, um, turning in things, and they're getting no response, and nothing's happening on those. So, I just want to make sure that, you know, it's great. This is great, and a good presentation. I love, uh, this kind of work, but we need to stay on top of it.
Yes, I agree.
Otherwise, it's useless.
I a hundred percent agree, yes.
And I know you will be.
Yes.
You're so good. Thank you.
Thank you.
For Jeremy. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Good presentation. Second presentation, please.
The second presentation is SafeQuest Solano, and our presenter is Don LaBarre of the City Manager's Office.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Don LaBarre at the City Manager's Office. I am here...uh, I have, uh, special guests here this evening from our SafeQuest, and they will be doing a brief presentation for you to provide you an update. Um, as you know, this is October, and it is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, so perfect timing. Thank you.
Hello. Hello. I'm Randy Zoida. I'm a community outreach coordinator and case manager. And then behind me is Mary Ann. She is the Executive Director of SafeQuest. So, today...today, I'm just gonna be talking about a little bit of who SafeQuest is. Uh, we were founded in nineteen seventy-six. We're a nonprofit organization providing prevention, education, advocacy, intervention services to those affected by domestic violence, sex trafficking, elder abuse, sexual assault, with an emphasis on partner-centered, informed trauma care. SafeQuest works with diverse partners to promote individual and family community transformation. Our organization can help in a plethora of ways. Some of these ways are restraining orders, court accompaniments, law enforcement accompaniments, pre-juvenile hall accompaniments. We also have support groups. We do case management, twenty-four-hour crisis line, prevention education, hospital response, community outreach, SART accompaniments. Uh, we also have a variety of safe...safety houses in Solano County. I'm very proud to say from, uh, October of two thousand eighteen to October of two thousand nineteen, SafeQuest have helped over roughly one thousand one hundred survivors here in Solano County. We, of course, hope these numbers do go down, but we are prepared to help anyone in need of our services and support. Um, some of the goals we are trying to accomplish, provide intervention services that account for individuals' age, stage of development, self-identity, disability, and cultural and social economic realities. Provide resources that are community-based, accessible, outcome-driven, collaborative, comprehensive, and culturally competent, integrated, prevention-focused, tailored to the individual and family community needs. Deliver advocacy for policies, programs, and funding emphasize individual health, healthy relationships, and the well-being by providing domestic violence, sexual assault, adult-slash-youth exploitation, and elder abuse. Align individuals' practice and measurements with the philosophy of practice of community Reduce incidence of domestic violence, sex trafficking, sexual assault in Solano County, while increasing the rates of victims to the appropriate...appropriate authorities. Ideally, SafeQuest wants to make Solano County a safer and better place for our current and future community. Uh, I will be accepting any questions you guys have.
Miss Colleagues? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Our final presentation this evening is Fairfield Community Services Foundation Update, and it's my pleasure to introduce the Speaker, John DiLorenzo, our former city employee.
Welcome back, John.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the... Loren...oh, thank you. John DiLorenzo, I am the President of the Fairfield Community Services Foundation this year, and I would like to thank the mayor and the council for this opportunity to share information about the Community Services Foundation and the programs that we support. I'd also like to thank the council, uh, for the support that you've given us, both by attending our events, and also by allocating CDBG funds to our organization so we can support the Fun on the Run program. This year actually marks our twenty-fifth anniversary, and during that time, we've invested approximately two million dollars in the Fairfield community to help the Fairfield residents most in need, and to also help build a better community. The foundation's a private, nonprofit, 501(c)(3) organization, and we're a total volunteer organization with no paid staff. Therefore, virtually all donations we receive go directly toward the services we support, uh, such as Fun on the Run. We rely on the community for all of our funding, as well as partnerships with service clubs, local businesses, Travis Air Force Base, and other community organizations. As I mentioned, as I mentioned, one of the programs we support is, uh, Fun on the Run in a great partnership with your Parks and Recreation Department. Now, I know the council is very familiar with the Fun on the Run program, but for the benefit of our audience, uh, Fun on the Run is an award-winning mobile recreation program that provides year-round supervised recreation and educational activities for kids ages four to fifteen in Fairfield's most underserved neighborhoods during the critical after-school and summer hours when kids are unsupervised and most likely to get into trouble. Last year attendance in Fun on the Run was fifteen thousand, of which we served eleven hundred individual kids. Uh, of those kids, nine hundred were very low-income, and seventy percent were Hispanic Fun on the Run overcomes, uh, typical barriers to participation for low-income families. Two of those key barriers are cost. The program is offered free of charge to the participants, and transportation. The program comes right into the kids' own neighborhoods, and it's conducted in parks, churches, and apartment complexes. There's a healthy food and nutrition component to Fun on the Run. Through a partnership with the Contra Costa Solano Food Bank, three to five pounds of fresh fruit and vegetables are provided weekly to each kid and their family. So, through physical activity and healthy food provided in Fun on the Run, we're helping to prevent childhood obesity and juvenile diabetes in kids. Every month, we receive one of these reports from the Parks and Recreation Department that includes comments from participants and their families. There's a comment here from one of the kids at the Grace Church site. It says, "Can you guys come every day? This is so fun." And a comment from one of the parents at the Parkway Community Church site that says, "I love that staff are interacting with kids." And that's a very important...important point, because the Parks and Recreation staff in Fun on the Run help very young, very impressionable, low-income youth make positive lifestyle choices when they're surrounded on a daily basis by many negative influences. And that's one of the key benefits... And that's one of the key benefits of Fund on the Run. We strive to get to kids before they get into trouble and before they go down the wrong path with the wrong crowd. So it's very much a preventative program and a good community investment. It's far more effective and less expensive than trying to deal with juvenile delinquents and worse, once they head down the wrong path, and we're very proud to be able to support Fund on the Run financially. Several years ago, we started a coats-for-kids program. Again, the staff in Parks and Recreation noticed that kids in the Fund on the Run program were coming to the program in the winter without coats or without warm clothes. So the Parks and Recreation Department, I'm sorry, the foundation partnered with the Parks and Recreation Department, as well as the city's fire department, to begin collecting and distributing warm clothing to hand out to kids in Fund on the Run. The clothes are provided to those kids ages four to 15 who otherwise might not have warm clothes. Over the last couple of years, we've actually collected and distributed hundreds of coats to Fund on the Run children, and this year on December 7th and 8th, we'll be partnering with Macy's to collect winter coat donations outside their store. KUIC Radio will also be there covering that event, and we invite the community to come and participate and provide us with some coats and warm clothing for children. We provide adult recreation center dinners in partnership with the Fairfield Sassoon Rotary Club, the Public Safety Academy, and Fairfield High School ROTC. We prepare and serve nutritious dinners twice a year at the Adult Recreation Center. We also provide raffle prizes, and the proceeds of which go to support the Adult Recreation Center. We just arrange for music to be provided at these dinners by an ensemble from Solano Winds, and the next dinner will be on November 14th. A couple of years ago, we also started to fund a concert series at the Adult Recreation Center. It was designed to appeal to the senior demographic that regularly uses the facility, as well as to draw, draw new guests to the facility, and this year we funded four concerts. We've been participating in the countywide assist-a-grad program for many years. Each year, we give seven high school seniors scholarships for $1,500 each to help alleviate the cost of college for these students. Now, in order to be eligible to apply for our scholarship, students must have a minimum of 100 hours of community service work. So over the course of the last 20-so years that we've been participating in this program, we've contributed about $50,000 in scholarships to high school seniors. And as someone who sat on the interviews of these kids, I can assure you that the future of our country is in very good hands with these young people. Almost all of these kids who apply for these scholarships have GPAs over 4.0. We support the Club SwimTastic program, which provides subsidized swim lessons to underprivileged youth. The program is designed to prevent drownings, which is the second-leading cause of unintentional injury and death among youth. This program is conducted, again, in partnership with the Parks and Recreation Department at the Allen Witch Swim Complex. You know, there's many apartment complexes throughout town that have pools, but the kids who live there don't know how to swim, so that's an inherent danger which we're trying to address through this program. Again, the staff noticed that many kids in Fund on the Run didn't have essential school supplies at the start of the school year. So the Community Services Foundation began to obtain backpacks and stuff them with school supplies, and start giving them out to the kids in the Fund on the Run program at the start of the school year. This year, volunteers from City Grace Church helped us on July 13th stuff 420 backpacks, and they actually helped us do that in an hour's time. The backpacks were given away to kids in Fund on the Run in August before school started. So through this program, we're helping low-income kids succeed academically by giving them necessary school supplies they otherwise might not have. To ensure every child in Fund on the Run receives at least one toy at the holiday season, and to create positive childhood memories, we began the Fund on the Run Toy Drive seven years ago, so this will be our seventh annual toy drive this year. And we have many sponsors who make this program possible, and they're listed there on the slide, and we appreciate their support very much. The toy collection starts around Thanksgiving, and this year it'll actually be conducted from November 25th to December 18th. Last year, we distributed 75 new bicycles and helmets and about 1,000 toys to kids in Fund on the Run, and the smiles and the joy that it brought to their faces was just priceless. We're partnering with Walmart again on December 7th and 8th to receive toy donations outside of Walmart, and there'll be toy bins placed around town so people can provide toy donations in the bins. We wanted to involve youth in helping to make a difference in their community, so this year we started a new program called Students Making a Difference Day, and these kids helped us clean up the Ledgewood Creek on April 20th this year. And we did this program in conjunction with the Fairfield Sassoon Sewer District. So we had board members volunteering to clean up the stream with students from the Public Safety Academy, youth and adults from City Grace Church, along with a number of other community volunteers, and a lot of trash was cleaned out of the creek. We have two major fundraisers, and I appreciate the Council's support. I know you've been attending these over the years. One is Prime Rib in the Park, that is hosted and conducted by the Fairfield Host Lions Club, and it benefits the Fairfield Community Services Foundation so that we can support Fund on the Run. This occurs at the end of August every year in McNauton Park. And our other large fundraiser is called Lobster Boil, that's hosted and conducted by the Fairfield Sassoon Twilight Rotary Club, again, benefits the foundation, and the proceeds go to Fund on the Run, and that event occurs at the end of September every year in McNauton Park. In 2018, we provided a $7,000 grant to help rebuild the San Marco Street Pocket Park. Not only did we fund the rehabilitation of the park, but foundation board members, park and recreation staff, Fairfield firefighters, property owners, and residents came together to install the new play equipment. Now that the park has been rehabilitated, Fund on the Run has returned to the park and the neighborhood. And the photo in the upper right-hand corner is kind of cute. Tetherball was the first thing that was installed in the rehabilitation, and those girls were so excited, they started playing tetherball before the park renovation was even completed, just couldn't keep them away. We provide senior day trip scholarships. Again, staff noted that some seniors at the Adult Recreation Center came to the kickoff meeting in the beginning of the year about all the day trips that were going to be conducted, but never went on the trips because they couldn't afford the fee. So in 2018, the foundation started offering scholarships for seniors who couldn't afford to go on the day trip outings at the Adult Recreation Center. And through this program, we're helping to reduce loneliness and social isolation among the senior population. So these are all the programs we supported in 2019, to the extent of $139,105 to support youth, teen, and senior programs. You can see the bulk of the funding went to support operations in the Fund on the Run program in the amount of $108,000. But we're very happy we could help build a better, help build a better community through funding these programs. And of course, as I mentioned earlier, we couldn't do it without our sponsors. They've just been great, they've been outstanding, and we thank them for allowing us to build a better community. That concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions the Council may have.
Comment your questions, Councilman Moy, please.
Thank you, John, it's good to see you.
Thank you.
Thank you for volunteering. This is an incredible foundation for our city, and I got to see it a lot when I ran Heather House, and I would also go down the street with some of my children and let them go down to Crowley Lane, which is, it's very popular there. And when I had ideas about something else that I thought maybe the foundation could do, always very open to it. About the swim thing, I was really concerned because a lot of my children could not afford, you know, to take lessons, and I thought they all needed to swim, and they always wanted to, because, you know, we'd walk down and let them play out in front of the Solano County, you know, with the water there. And so, it's so important, and to the seniors, just across the board, and there's so many of you who volunteer, it's just wonderful. And I, even with you, how detailed you were, it doesn't really say exactly how it changes kids. Little kids so happy to see the van pull up, even when it was Healthy Eating Day, and they didn't know sometimes what the fruit was, and they'd teach them, sometimes they didn't know. And so, it's just so important, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I'd like to add my compliments to, John. I think what you've established with the foundation is the realization that it doesn't seem to matter where you live, you can be a participant in all of these activities, and when people, when neighbors give to neighbors, the world is a much better place. I don't know any other community that does it as well as the folks in Fairfield do, so thank you very much for that continuing leadership as well.
Thank you. Well, it's a great partnership with city staff, it couldn't happen without them.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And they know how to have fun, too. Thank you. We turn now to public comments, please. Madam Clerk, if you would, please.
Speakers, excuse me, speakers may address items on this agenda at the time each item is considered. Under public comments, the public may speak on items not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the city council, provided that no action may be taken on off-agenda items except as authorized by law. Off-agenda items from the public will be taken under consideration without discussion by the council and may be referred to staff. Speakers are requested to limit their comments to four minutes total with the last minute summarizing their remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and our first speaker will be Jeff Traeger, to be followed by Ricky Horton, please.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, I wanted to bring everybody up to date what's going on at the Downtown Theater. This Friday, we have Little Shop of Horrors starting for a couple of weeks, and then in November, we have Disney's Frozen Junior. But a couple of weeks ago, I was in here making a presentation that Tony Wade, Mr. Fairfield, helped put together for me, which was a tribute to the amazing Retha Franklin. And I wanted to bring you up to date, that last Saturday night, we had a full house, a full diverse house, and we had people as far as Sacramento and Oakland that came there for the show, put on by the amazing Janice Maxey Reed, who's worked with Lionel Richie and many great, Stevie Wonder. We had, we had a choir, a local choir of 20 senior citizens came on, and they finished off the show by doing "Oh, Happy Day," and I'm telling you, it was amazing, amazing show, and I, I think that what's happening down there is we, we're finally getting through to the people in the community that were putting on good shows down, great shows down there at the Downtown Theater, along with the, the other events at Day in Missouri Street Theater. And the way I get into, and get the word out there, I'm doing a lot of working with Travis Air Force Base, and I'm also going, I go into the mama, papa barber shops, and also the hair salons, and I talk to people there. And I'm still amazed that people say to me that they've never been down to the Downtown Theater, so I talked a couple of couples into coming, and they, afterwards, the show, they came up to me and said, "That was amazing. I wish, wish we had known about this place before." So it's slowly but surely, we're getting the word out there, and I, I'm just very pleased with the, the community and the support. To see the other night was really something, it was, it was quite an, I mean, obviously, Retha Franklin, come on.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeffrey. Ricky Horton, to be followed by Margaret Manzo, please.
Thank you, Mayor, Council members. I actually have a transcript of what I'll be talking about here, if our city clerk can pass those out to the council members, I'll be basically reading it here, but there is a chart similar to what I had presented last council meeting, explaining and displaying the two separate and distinct jurisdictions. One jurisdiction is of the people, and the other jurisdiction is of the municipal government. And so, this is just some of the responsibilities of the jurisdiction. Jurisdiction is defined in one dictionary, and I'll just go over a couple of brief ones. One is the official power to make legal decisions and judgments. That's us, that's the people, that's us. Another one is a system of law courts. For the people, that's called a court of record. It's required by Article 6 of the California Constitution. Court of Record proceeds under the laws of the land. An admiralty court or other inferior courts operate within the laws of codes and statutes, which is corporate codes and statutes. Municipal governments, for instance, have codes and statutes, and those are municipal courts or admiralty courts, but not court of records proceeding under the laws of the land. So there are two separate and distinct courts as well. And another jurisdiction is the territory or spheres of activity over which the legal authority of a court or under other institution extends, and that's this municipal government. The City of Fairfield is a corporation, it's a municipal government, and they have limited jurisdiction as defined. We, the people, have unlimited jurisdiction. We are of and within the jurisdiction, one, as shown on the corrected chart. Our jurisdiction, number one, is also known as the law of the land, soil, water, air, and all that is of Fairfield, Solano County, California, the territory named after our peaceful ancestor known as Semierro. As most of us know, Semierro was chief of the Sassoones people, and he was renamed Chief Solano by Spanish settlers. Our county is named in honor of our peacekeeping chief, Semierro, also known as Chief Solano. The governments, corporations, and any codes or statutes fall within jurisdiction number two. Governments have a specific and defined and limited jurisdiction, and our own City of Fairfield, a municipal corporate government, falls under this limited jurisdiction. The incorporated municipal government, known as City of Fairfield, only has jurisdiction within the territory or sphere of activity over which their legal authority, authority extends. The municipal government is within the bounds of a separate and distinct jurisdiction apart from the people. We, the people, grant to our municipal governments their authority to act and remind them from time to time of their limitations. For instance, at the last council meeting, I provided one such rule mentioned several times within our own California government codes and statute, and that code clearly states that the people of this state do not yield our sovereignty to the agencies that serve us. That included every agency, not just the municipal government, known as the City of Fairfield, but also this elected body, known as the Fairfield City Council. The duty of this council is simple, and the duty of this council is to protect and defend the inherent rights of us, the people. The duty of the people is to elect a representative to this council that can rule with honor and integrity. Our responsibility, the responsibility of the people, does not end with just electing somebody of integrity that will uphold their oath of office. Our duty extends to ensure proper governing structure that will guarantee to our children and the generations that follow us, a governing structure that will guarantee the inherent rights bestowed upon us and our children, the inherent and unalienable rights given to us by God, our Creator. So I'd like you to continue to look at the organizational chart and understand both jurisdictions.
Sorry, you're out of time, but thank you for the attachment. And our, our next speaker, please, will be Margaret Manzo, to be followed by Nora Dezon.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you so much, I'll be very brief. I just wanted to come and welcome everybody to our upcoming events in downtown Fairfield. I'm the Executive Director for the Fairfield Main Street Association, and first, in November, on November 2nd, we have Day of the Dead Spirit Stroll, and tickets are available on FairfieldMainStreet.com if anybody wants to come and enjoy some fun activities in downtown, go place to place, and engage with all of our business owners downtown. And then, of course, I know I shouldn't pick favorites, but it is my absolute favorite, the Annual Veterans Day Parade and Commemoration Ceremony. the annual Veterans Day Parade and Commemoration Ceremony taking place, of course, on November 11th. It falls on a Monday this year. I hope you're all off. I hope you have a holiday. Come on downtown. 12:30 begins the parade. Commemoration Ceremony is from 10:00 a.m. to noon at the Downtown Theater. So we hope everybody will come and enjoy those two great events. And then, of course, also in November is Small Business Saturday on November 30th. And that's when you can support local, support our mom and pops, and shop downtown and come and have lunch on Saturday after Thanksgiving. Thanks so much. Hope to see y'all there.
Thank you, Margaret. Nora Dezon to be followed by Bonnie Hamilton, please.
Good evening. I have a question. We recently learned that the Planning Commission meeting for the Green Valley Apartments is going to be held on the evening before Thanksgiving. And of course, this is going to make it so that a lot of people who would otherwise attended the meeting will not be able to come. And I changed my plan so I could attend, but is it legal to do this? Is there going to be a special city council meeting on December 24th of this year in a day, the evening before Christmas for this special project? I want to know if it's legal. If it's not, can we change the date? And if we can't change it this year, I think we should change whatever regulations that allow this because Thanksgiving and Christmas are two holidays that people travel to be with their families. And to do something like this, I think, is not very nice. So I'm requesting that if this is legal, that we make a change so that we don't do this in the City of Fairfield. Thank you.
Mr. City Attorney, please.
So it turns out that the regular meeting of the Planning Commission is the night before Thanksgiving. So it is legal to hold a meeting. It's discretionary whether the city would actually postpone that, but it is, it is a lawful meeting to go forward with it.
Thank you. And our final speaker under public comments will be Bonnie Hamilton, please. Oh, I'm sorry. Bonnie Hamilton and then George Gwynn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, honorable city council members, city staff, and fellow citizens. My name is Dr. Bonnie Hamilton. I have one announcement and one comment. I am speaking on behalf of the Solano County Library Foundation. The Solano County Library Foundation has its annual event, the 2019 Authors Luncheon, on Sunday, November 3rd, at the clubhouse at Rancho Solano. The event raises money to support literacy programs through the Solano County libraries, bringing the gift of reading and lifelong learning to Solano County residents. Please buy your tickets if you haven't already and we would love to see you there. Now, my, my comment on speaking as an individual, in response to what happened with the PG&E Public Safety Power Shutdown last week, and it, which is just a taste of things to come. I implore the city to consider energy security, independence, and resiliency through the use of microgrids. Microgrids, by definition, could be on one building or multiple buildings. It is where you have solar panels and utility batteries as backup. It could be on, as I said, on one building at a time, like the police station or the jail or the water treatment place. Or it could be downtown in this area with the community center and the jail and just in a small area. It could be a community. It could be a city. It could be a county. It could be a region. It is not only fiscally responsible, it is also provide, could provide uninterrupted services for our citizens. So this is the future and I implore the City of Fairfield to follow it. We could be an example for the rest of the state of California as, as well as the country. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hamilton. Mr. George Gwynn, please, and my apologies.
Apology accepted. As far as being out of order, it's kind of hard to do anything else but to say something when the name's not called, so that's how it goes. I'd like to say a few words about the taxpayer. As you know, California leads the nation in taxes and it should be the least imposing on the taxpayer instead of the other way around, but unfortunately, that's not the Hopefully, in the future, things will turn around because the public works hard for their money and they deserve a right to spend it the way they want instead of having it taken from and spent in other ways that can be less efficient, to say the least. And it also doesn't create more efficient government when you have a lot of money out there that isn't being spent in the most efficient manner possible. And it's really not fair to the taxpayers because they're paying for a service and if they're not getting all the service they can get, then they're not really spending their money on something that is going to do them the most good. And I think there's a lot of things that could be done to improve that efficiency and I hope in the near future, you guys will have everything lined up to make sure that's the case because if things keep going the way they're going, it looks like bankruptcy for a lot of different organizations and that's not a very pretty thing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, George. We turn now to the consent calendar. Madam Clerk, if you would, please.
All matters listed on the consent calendar are to be approved with one motion unless a member of the council or the public requests that separate action be taken on a specific item.
And I do have one request to speak, Carter. Mr. John Dickerson, please. Item number six.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. As a resident here in Fairfield, California, I have two items on the consent calendar I'd like to speak to and that's first off of item six, which is a redistricting of Dobie Road and Peabody. That area is already congested. It is, it is, it's the main, one of the main drives into the junior high school, it's a main drive into the high school, and it's the main drive into its own area of housing. To redistrict that from commercial use into more housing just exasperates an already problem we have in this area and that is we don't have any food available within a short distance. There is no walking distance to any food in this hole, in that area, other than the Quick Mart. And I love a smoothie, too, but not for dinner. And there's, even if you went down to Rayleigh's, the nearest Rayleigh's is not within walking distance and there is no safe walking area to get there. I would like to ask that this not be redistricted to housing, that if need be, at least make it into food areas. If you're going to congest the area, at least make it towards something that we can buy food in. And do I need to continue on with item 15 or is that next time?
That'll come under new business.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, John. Entertainer motion to approve the consent calendar as submitted with Mr. Dickerson's comments being noted. It's been moved by Councilman Bucaro, seconded by Councilman Tim. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Yes, please. Thank you. We turn now, new business, please. Madam Clerk.
Item 10, Resolution 2019-235 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield authorizing the city managers to submit PG&E load data request forms for participation in a community choice aggregation program.
Mayor and council members, I need to abstain on this item because my firm represents both MCE on matters and EBCE, so I'll be stepping out on this, but the city has had special counsel to advise staff on this item.
And our presenters, Felix Reasonberg from Public Works Department.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Felix Reasonberg, Assistant Public Works Director, Utilities. And I'll, I'll try and keep this fairly brief because of the things we've got going on tonight. So part of the reason I'm here is a few months back, Marin Clean Energy came and gave a presentation on community choice aggregation and then really what they had to offer. And as a result of that, council asked staff to take a look at what our other options were. And so we've gone ahead and done that and again, as, as Mr. Stapanasich mentioned, we did that with the assistance of another outside attorney who did not have ties to MCE. So I'm going to go through this fairly quickly because a lot of the technical details have, were discussed at that meeting and we can certainly answer some of those questions. There are representatives from Marin Clean Energy here who can answer some very technical questions if you have them, because I'm not the best one to answer those. But here we go. So just real quick, I'll do a quick overview on what community choice aggregation is, why it's important to Fairfield and our residents and businesses, our options, and then the comparison of the two, the two local alternatives that we have, as well as some recommendations. So just real quickly, I'm not going to read these, a lot of words, but this is a way to have another, really, local government-led power source, and in this case, it's electrical power only, as an alternative to PG&E's electrical power service. They give us a little more local control at the city level and it's also, there's a different, a different model behind what they're doing. They're doing this for the residents and to have, you know, better, better, cleaner power options. And they're also, the way they're made up organizationally is they're not led by shareholders and, and a for-profit company. So a little different business model that they have that, that generally is, you know, can be viewed as more favorable to the residents and businesses in a community. And then again, the way they do it is they, they aggregate demand in a regional basis and secure that power so that they can provide it a cost, in a cost-effective manner and be competitive with PG&E. So why is it important for us? Again, it gives us another choice as residents and businesses. It is a greener power supply alternative and there are gradations that you can pick if you want to go more green. And they're not-for-profit agencies that answer to a board made above the local agencies that participate. So again, you have a little more local control. And really, one of the main things, right now, the City of Fairfield doesn't have an adopted climate action plan, but we may need to get there. Solano County does. And this is viewed as one of the most efficient ways to meet those greenhouse gas emission reduction goals on a, on a regional basis. It's, it's actually about as painless of a way to do that as you can get. So, so our options right now, there are three local community choice aggregators in, in the area. Yolo County was not interested in expanding. They told us that they weren't interested at all. We reached out to East Bay Community Energy and Marin Clean Energy had already reached out to us. And so at this point, kind of just in real general options, we, we can choose not to go forward with the CCA in any way, shape, or form and just stick with PG&E. And that, that'll have implications. We may get back to that. If we, if we do that now, we may be back to this process because I think in time, we're going to need to deal with state mandates related to greenhouse gas reductions. Or we can move forward with one of the, the two local aggregators that are available to us and, and, and go through that process and seek inclusion and, and take the steps necessary to, to provide that option for our residents. So let's see here. So this, again, I'm not going to go over this in great detail, but I will touch on some of the highlights. And really, where, where the staff recommendation is going with this is to go with Marin Clean Energy over East Bay Community Energy. And this kind of highlights the reasons, but the primary reasons are Marin Clean Energy is, is more well-established. They're actually seeking to expand into Solano County. East Bay Community Energy is not necessarily seeking to do so. They might be willing to if we ask them, but that's not where they're necessarily wanting to go right now. They're still growing and developing as a community choice aggregator. The, the board makeup, if we were to join Marin Clean Energy, it's a larger board, but we can, we can designate an existing member to vote on our behalf. If there's other elected officials in another area that we trust, we could essentially give them our vote without having to attend a meeting in the Bay Area. Most of these meet quarterly and so it would be a challenge, I think, to have regular board participation, potentially. The renewable energy programs are similar. They're not completely apples to apples, but they're, they're pretty darn close. The rates tend to be slightly better right now for MCE versus East Bay Clean Energy. And again, there's, there's attachments in your packets that are very detailed and relatively complicated, but in general, the MCE rates are slightly lower. And just to, to help put that in perspective, I actually, where I live, I'm, I'm on the MCE program. I have roughly $150 a month power bill. Of that, I probably save on the MCE kind of baseline power, I save $2 to $3 a month out of my $150 bill. And that's consistent with what they say. It's about a half a percent savings. It's pretty seamless. I, I was a little, little skeptical at first, like I am in most things that, that come across my, my mail, like, well, why would I want to do this? But I went through the process and it's been, it's been seamless, painless, and it was as advertised. So I can, I can at least speak to that. And then as far as the, the size of, of the two, Marin Clean Energy does have a number of projects that they've participated in. They have a much stronger project base, which that's, they, they go out and secure the power for a, a long-term period to serve the communities that they, that they are, that join the organization. So, and with that, they have a few more options for residents and businesses to participate in. So that's where we're at right now. What the staff recommendation is, is to move forward with participating in a CCA. And MCE, we think, makes the most sense. They're, they're already, I think we've got Solano County's participating, City of Benicia's participating locally, Vacaville is deferred, selecting probably in, I think, later, later this year, early next year. And I'm probably missing something in there, but it, it does provide a little bit of regional continuity and clarify, I guess, lack of confusion potentially for residents and customers to know kind of what the whole program is. But what we're really asking for right now is staff direction to either participate or not participate in the CCA concept. And if council's supportive of moving forward there, we would simply be, I think, all we're requesting as part of this action is to authorize the release of our, or to fill out PG&E data forms and release that information to the CCA we're leaning towards. And in this case, we're recommending MCE. With that, we would start that process, but then we would come back before council where we would, we would actually do the formal request for inclusion that would include any resolutions, agreements, ordinances, things like that. So council will have another chance to decide, do we really want to move forward with this or not? And we can provide more information specific to MCE at that time when we go through that process. And so with that, I can answer any questions to the best I can with, with process and then we can bring MCE up if there's some detailed ones that I can't answer.
One request to speak, Carter, but we'll take comments from council first, please. Councilman Tim, please.
Felix, if we choose one, is there a chance for a competing company to come back in or is it, you're going to have PG&E and MCE or the other one?
That's my understanding, that, that it wouldn't be something you'd open it back up at another time because a lot goes into this. When you, when you select a community choice aggregator, they are going out and securing power on behalf of your community. There are opt-out provisions in there, so I suppose theoretically, it's possible you could opt out of one and then opt back into another. That opt-out process, I don't think anyone's opted out to date, so while it, it's, it's possible, no one's really tried to see what it is. I think we'd be liable for the costs that the community choice aggregator made to invest in our community and that if we backed out, we'd be responsible for, for reimbursing them for those costs, what those exactly are and the magnitude that I don't have a sense of.
But there's no competition driving dollars. And it's funny, this came up on the agenda when we just had the debacle with PG&E, but what I'm concerned about is if you, if it's PG&E or MCE, who's going to keep MCE in line? But what I'm concerned about is if it's PG&E or MCE, who's going to keep MCE in line as far as competitive dollars?
Well, I think you always would have PG&E as your fallback comparison. So I think you could, whether an individual was unhappy that their bill was going up, maybe at a greater rate than they would like, or the PG&E side wasn't going up for some other reason, you could opt out as an individual. And then, you know, and people opt in for various, well, you know, you do have to opt out. But if you stay in, you do it generally for the type of power that you want to purchase as an individual and often what your rates are. And so if rates were to go up, you can opt out, and I believe the cost of an individual to opt out is very, very minimal. Now, as far as if the city were to do that, you know, I'm not totally sure there, but I think it would be incumbent on both entities, PG&E, whatever the CCA of choice is, to keep their rates competitive. And I know both MCE and East Bay Community Energy do specifically attempt to keep their rates in line and slightly lower than PG&E to the extent that they can. Where we'll be in 20, 30, 40 years, that is a bit of an unknown as to where the energy market will go and how power is purchased and procured.
And transmitted.
Correct. You're right, because still.
Because you're going to use PG&E lines. Are you familiar with, I think it was a company called Zoom, and they did this for your gas bill? And it started low, and then all of a sudden, their cost per thermes started going up. And after about two years, if you weren't paying attention and you had nothing to compare with, all of a sudden, you look back at PG&E. So this is my only concern, is there competition among the aggregators that'll keep them in check? And if you can't answer, that's okay. We have a lot of time to figure it out, but that's one of the questions I probably would like an answer to.
Sure.
Felix, thank you, sir.
Councilman Moye, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Good presentation, Felix. I appreciate the work staff's done when we asked for, to look at other options. I have a question, and I think some people, if we decide to do this, are going to be confused, especially maybe people who are elderly and just used to having PG&E, and they may not opt out in time. What kind of things can we do, or does MCE or whoever else do, to ensure that people know that they can get out of this? Within, what, 90 days? It's not a lot of time.
I believe so. You have to make that call pretty quickly out of the gate. And I think if I understand from what I've looked at, there is a fairly lengthy public outreach process that MCE or the other aggregator would help us with. And so there is a public outreach in combination between MCE and the city. And I can't speak on personal experience. I did get that. I got, you know, numerous mailings, opportunities to go listen in on presentations or hear what was going on. And so that, because that is such an important component, because the way the legislation was written, it is an opt-out program, not an opt-in. And that's not MCE's doing. It's not any local agency's doing. I think that's really a state-driven process, knowing that more people will not necessarily pay that much attention, and they'll be automatically enrolled in an effort to get more people procuring green power. Now, the fact that the rates are comparable to a little bit lower, that's helpful. Certainly, if we get some insurance that they'll stay that way, or there's checks and balances along the way, I think there's less concern. But I think there is that public outreach process, and that'll be very important for people to take the time to understand what they're getting into and make sure they're doing, which either way they go for the right reasons for them.
Okay. And then the last question, or the second question I have is, in the staff report, you talk about there may be a $10,000 fee that the city might have to pay. What would trigger that fee?
In that, I think, and, I don't, just correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that fee, as I understand it, was when we request inclusion, we could have to pay that fee to do the technical studies. I think MCE has indicated that it is highly unlikely that we would have to pay that fee. It's usually waived if there's a formal inclusion period going on, which is the period that we opted not to try and meet earlier this year. And so they're not positive they're going to have this inclusion period open next year to a number of folks. They may or they may not. Whether they do or not, if we seek inclusion, they said the odds are fairly good that we would not have to pay.
Okay. So with, is that just with MCE or the other one as well?
I think that would stand with the other one as well. They would have a similar, a similar technical analysis to be done. I haven't spoken with them directly to know whether they would charge us or not. But I think that's something that when we requested the inclusion, we would have the answer to that before we had you selected, you know. We wouldn't ask you to spend money unknowingly.
Okay. I think overall, because of the way things are going, that we should take an option on this. But those are the two things that stick out for me, and it concerns me, especially for our senior citizens. So I think we need to keep that in mind, and if there's anything, if we get to the point of negotiating with these people, because I hope that they would negotiate. First of all, I'd hope that they would strike the $10,000, and secondly, make sure that we are doing maybe something at the senior center, the ARC, you know, something to get out to our seniors. But thank you. It was a good presentation.
You're welcome.
Carl, please.
Yeah, thank you, Felix. And, you know, I also wanted to follow up on what Dr. Hamilton was talking about. I think, you know, the city really does need to take a stand on this, because, you know, clean energy alternatives are the way, are the future. There's no doubt about it. Especially, and it is interesting that, you know, I mean, this happened right now, right, last week. But I appreciate your presentation. But I also think we also need to take a good look at what Dr. Hamilton was talking about also, you know, the solar panels on our emergency buildings. I know I met with Terry Vernon, Clean Energy, right? And I know that he's going to reach out to other people, too. I think it's just really critical that we look at every alternative possible, especially with the way things are going right now in California. So, thanks.
Any other comments, colleagues? Madam, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for a great presentation. So with PG&E, the Public Utilities Commission ideally has some oversight role with PG&E and the provision of their services. Is there any kind of organization that would be a parallel to what the Public Utilities Commission is for PG&E, for these new entities?
Do you mind? I'll let, this is Jenna Famular with Marin Clean Energy, so she can get to the specifics.
You're good. Thank you.
Got it.
Thank you, Felix. Good evening. So in terms of regulation, our board regulates us in a variety of different ways. So our board actually, they regulate our rates, and they also regulate the greenhouse gas-free and renewable content that we put in our portfolio that exceeds the state mandates. So in terms of state mandates for renewable energy content and things like that, that's regulated by the CPUC and the Energy Commission. And then we also are subject to regulations from the Federal Energy Commission. So we're regulated by a variety of different agencies in terms of reporting and energy supply portfolios and greenhouse gas statistics. And then our board further regulates us to go beyond that. And then we are able to determine where our revenues are redirected into the community. Felix listed some of the programs that we have, and then also how we set our rates. So that goes back to the earlier question about how are, where is that competitiveness and how are our rates controlled? So you all would help with that process.
Thank you.
I, too, am a bit wary, but at the same time, we've got to provide some direction to city staff on where we proceed from here. I think we should proceed very, very cautiously. But before we take any formal action, we have one request to speak, Carl. Nora Deason, please.
I watched special meetings held for two other cities about MCE, and the data seems to be a little bit different than what I saw that was included in the agenda packet. I don't know if the rates have recently come down, but it seems to be much better now than what was presented at the other two cities. So I am very curious why, you know, the change. I appreciated the honesty and openness with the presentations at the other cities, and I think that's what we need to know. And thank you very much for talking about reaching out to people, because I think it would be horrible if they suddenly opened their bill. They have a different energy provider that they never knew anything about. So anyway, I'm curious why it's different here. Thank you.
Nora, before you sit down, can you tell us a little more specifically about the differences in the data that you saw from the other meetings and tonight's data? Let us know if you have any more detail on that.
What I saw in, when I looked at the comparisons that were included in the agenda packet, it appears as if MCE is clearly less expensive. It appears that way. But when it was presented at other cities, at certain levels, it was about the same. But then when you go greener, it becomes more expensive. And I've heard that, so it's not just the city council meetings that I watched. It was on Nextdoor. We've got some people who lived in places where they had MCE, and that's their comment. It's consistent. If you go greener, it goes more expensive, which is, so we just want the truth, that's all. On the data that I saw in our agenda packet, it appeared as everything was cheaper.
Are you saying more expensive than PG&E, or are you saying more expensive than the numbers you see tonight?
I'm saying that when I looked at the packet that was in the, in this city council agenda, you look at the numbers, PG&E always seemed to be a little bit more expensive. But in the presentation in the other cities, that wasn't true.
Thank you for that. Nothing gets past you, Nora. Can anyone, can anyone speak to that?
I think I can. I mean, I spent some time looking at those, and I think, and that's part of the reason I didn't get into trying to do some summary comparison table, because they, those sheets break it down by tier and the type of account that you have. And so kind of in global terms, and it would depend on how any city presented it, and it's possible I'm presenting something differently, but this information, we vetted through the other legal counsel. She provided it to me. It's available on the various websites. Not 100% sure it's the very latest up-to-date thing. I think it is. It's pretty darn close, and it was good enough for comparison purposes, certainly. But if you looked at, if you look at it kind of across the board for like products, MCE was a little bit cheaper in essentially every category. And there might be one or two that weren't, but essentially, they were a little bit cheaper in every category. East Bay Clean Energy was a little bit more than MCE and still a little bit less than PG&E. But I think where you could get easily confused is, most of us just get PG&E power or electricity. We don't, apparently, there are green options within PG&E, and you can pay more and have a higher renewable content through PG&E. I wasn't aware of it. I'm not aware of it. I don't know how to even go about requesting it if I wanted it right now. But when you sign on with MCE, they make it very clear you have their basic 60% renewable portfolio, and you can move up to 100% portfolio. Their 100% portfolio is more expensive than your basic PG&E cost. And so if you wanted to go more green than you most likely currently do on your PG&E bill, you will pay more. If you want to go with a comparable greenness that's, it's more green, but it's about the same, again, it's kind of hard to explain the portfolio differences, you'll be just a hair less if you go with MCE for a like product. Is that fair? Okay.
Other comments, colleagues? Well, Felix, it sounds to me like when the first compact cars were produced in this country, and the price seemed to be a little bit higher. And when I questioned that, the response was, well, if you want the economy, you have to pay for it, which made no sense at all to me. So what kind of direction shall we give folks? Do you want to proceed cautiously? Okay? And can you, Felix, can you get us some other answers then, please?
Yeah, absolutely. We'll make sure those answers, or the questions, the answers to those questions are provided when we bring this back. And what we'll bring back is the formal request for inclusion to MCE with these questions answered, and what exactly it'll take, what we're looking to sign and do, and then council can make a decision at that time whether we truly want to move forward.
And do you have a sense of how much time that will take?
Maybe a month or two. I'll have to work with other outside council to make sure we get all the documents reviewed and prepared. And I think they're fairly straightforward, and I think she's got a pretty good handle on it. I'm just not quite sure what we'll need to draft up and do so. But we'll try and do it fairly quickly.
Good. We would appreciate that. Mr. City Manager, your comments.
The only comment I have is, there is actually a resolution this time tonight. And resolution basically would authorize us to go to PG&E and start getting the data. So we're looking for direction to move forward with that.
I'll make a motion.
And that's a reasonable approach. Is there a motion to approve? It's been moved by Vice Mayor, seconded by Councilman, but Carl, all in favor? Motion carries on. Thank you very much. We turn then to item number 11, please, Madam Clerk.
Item 11, Resolution 2019-236 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield, approving required findings relating to the adoption and amendment of the 2019 California Building Standards Code, also known as Chapter 5 Building and Housing Code of the City of Fairfield, Municipal Code, and, first reading and introduction of ordinance 2019-08 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield, repealing and replacing Chapter 5 of the City of Fairfield Municipal Code, also known as the Building and Housing Code of the City of Fairfield, adopting by reference Title 24 of the 2019 California Code of Regulations, known collectively as the California Building Standards Code, respectively, Part 2 California Building Code, Part 2.5 California Residential Building Code, Part 3 California Electrical Code, Part 4 California Mechanical Code, Part 5 California Plumbing Code, Part 6 California Energy Code, Part 8 California Historical Building Code, Part 9 California Fire Code as amended in Chapter 8 of the City of Fairfield Municipal Code, Part 10 California Existing Building Code, Part 11 California Green Building Standards Code, Cal Green Code, Part 12 California Reference Standards Code, and also adopting the 2018 International Property Maintenance Code and supplementary secondary references. And our presenter is our new Chief Building Official, Jeffrey Thomas.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Thank you for the opportunity to present to you tonight the triennial adoption of the Building Standards Commission Code, and this is a 2019 version. So through that, we have to, I have to present for you tonight a resolution and an ordinance for adoption. The resolution is necessary for making findings to adopt the building code and any amendments that are made to it based on our geologic, geographic, or climatic conditions in our area. And then the ordinance that we're presenting tonight will be repealing and replacing all previous versions of the ordinances. Historically, there's been a number of ordinances that the Building Division has passed over the years, and this ordinance will consolidate all of those into one ordinance for transparency and future clarity moving forward. All the historical amendments that we've come to recognize here in the city are being maintained as well with adding a few amendments to improve our emergency response, abilities to have electrical power, temporary or emergency electrical power, and improve our ability to permit housing through the Building Division. Just a couple notable changes. I'll probably skip the first two just in, because of the timing for tonight. But one I definitely want to note on is this year's 2019 version is the final in the governor's desire to meet a net-zero electrical energy usage for new residences. In effect, that means that all new residences submitted after January 1st, 2020, will require a solar PV system placed on their residence. So before you tonight, my recommendation is to adopt the resolution that's before you, a resolution 2019-236 approving the findings for the city to make the amendments to the Building Standards Code, also to introduce the ordinance 2019-08- to the Building Standards Code, also to introduce the ordinance 2019-08, and schedule a public hearing for that ordinance at your next scheduled meeting on November 5th, 2019.
Comments or questions, please? Councilman Tim, please.
Thank you. Is this a direct result of the housing crisis? Can you tell me, because it looks like we're talking about tiny homes, accessory dwelling units, and units 400 square feet and less?
Yes, Mayor, Councilmember Tim, that's correct. The Building Standards Commission, in association with the Housing and Community Development Department at State, actually created a chapter, which they adopted in the California Residential Code that allows for tiny homes, not typically the tiny homes that you may think of, that you've seen on TV, on wheels. Those generally aren't allowed through the building code at this time. However, it's for 400 square foot and less structures. It's greatly reduced some of the building code requirements with respect to access to lofts with ship ladders, the ability to have fire escape access through like a skylights that open to operable dimensions for emergency escape, narrowing stairway widths to allow for more efficient use of other interior areas within the home, reducing head heights within the residence as well.
And this is, this is in compliance with state mandated rules, now changing the building codes for cities, correct?
That's correct.
All right. Thank you very much.
Councilman Moy, please.
Thank you. So, do you see with the reduction in what is, you know, been standard for, I guess standard, for building homes and so on, are we setting ourselves up for like big problems with earthquakes and stuff like that, and just real safety, human safety inside these things? It seems scary to me. Now, I'm a wife of a roofer, and so I know a little bit about building and structures. We've built them from the dirt up. My question is, just your opinion on these things? Are we putting people in shanty, you know? It just worries me.
Mayor, Councilmember Moy, no. Those regulations aren't being affected. They still have to be compliant with all the other regulations within the California Building Code with respect to foundation design, structural, lateral loading components, you know, meeting the earthquake requirements. All the energy components need to be met. They would also have to have solar systems placed on them.
I was going to say, solar on them?
Yeah. So, all the other, they're just reducing some of the barriers that tend to sometimes make it a little bit more difficult, and reducing the ability to cost. And we will probably likely see a lot of these on second unit type situations, which is, I believe, where it is really geared towards, to help minimize those cost impacts for folks to be able to, you know, construct as an investment on their property for rental opportunities.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Excellent presentation, Jeffrey.
Thank you.
Okay. So, the action before us this evening?
The action this evening would be to, we'll have to ask for any public, is there any public comment?
I will, in a second.
Okay.
I don't have any request to speak cards. Anyone choosing to speak on this item should do so now. See you then.
Right. So, the first item would be to adopt the resolution, making the required findings here for local conditions. Then this would be to adopt Resolution 2019-238.
And Councilman Tim, is there a second, please? Councilman Moy, all in favor? Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
And our next item is to waive further reading and read by Tada only, introduced for first reading, ordinance number 2019-08, and this will be introduced this evening.
Motion to approve. Councilman Moy, seconded by Councilman Picaro. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries unanimously.
Lastly, this is a little different procedure with the building code. The public hearing happens on second reading, so you will be, have a public hearing on this item on November 5th.
Okay. Thank you very much. Well done. We turn then to item number 12, please.
Resolution 2019-237 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield, approving Solano Garbage Company rate increases for 2020. And again, our presenter is Assistant Public Works Director Felix Reisenberg.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. Felix Reisenberg, Assistant Public Works Director, Utilities. And I'll make my fish-out-of-water joke, the water guy here doing a lot of non-water items under the title tonight. So, with this one, though, I don't have a formal presentation. The information is contained in the agenda report. I will speak to some of the highlights and why we're here in front of council with this item. Essentially, as we approached mid-year this year, Solano Garbage Company, Republic Services, approached the city about three potential needs to raise rates. One is our standard annual increase. That is, by contract, between 2.5 and 4% based on a consumer price index factor related to trash. If we exceed that 4% threshold for any reason, we bring that in front of council, really in the spirit of transparency. It is a contractual requirement, if they've provided the necessary justification, which they have. We've had an independent consultant, our solid waste consultant, R3, basically validate the numbers, verify that they're accurate and reasonable. In the case of, so that's one. The second one is a change in law provision that no longer allows organic waste, which we have traditionally taken to Solano, or to Pettero Hills landfill, and it gets used as alternative daily cover, and we get disposal credit for that. In 2020, in January 1, 2020, that goes away. We can no longer get disposal credit for it. And so, in order for the city to meet its state mandated diversion requirements of 50%, we need to find another way to deal with that. And so, in order to achieve what the city needs to, Solano Garbage Company went and researched a way to do that. And again, it's outside the origin, what was originally envisioned in the contract. And so, a potential deal has been worked out between Pettero Hills and Napa, who has a large composting facility they've recently built and can handle the organics, and we would get full diversion credit for those organic wastes. That change in law provision is also a contractually allowed request by Solano Garbage, which they have done per the terms of the contract. Again, our consultant, R3, has reviewed the methodology and the pricing for reasonableness and have concluded that it is a fair and reasonable request. The challenge with all this, I mean, going back to the first item then, the part of the reason we had such a high CPI this year is because of the change in the recycling market nationwide. And so, some of that is, you know, bigger politics. It's a little bit of the trade war going on with the US and China. They're no longer taking a lot of those products. The markets have collapsed, and communities and garbage companies nationwide have been trying to figure out how to deal with those recyclables. That was the third request that Republic Services, Solano Garbage, has made to essentially all of their customers. The other companies, Waste Management, the other big ones, are all making that same request because of this really radical change in that recyclables market. Because our contract requires Solano Garbage to deal with that, it's very specific that if there's a collapse in the market, that's on them, it's not on us. And because some of that is captured in this elevated CPI this year already, we said we could not support that. And so, that piece is not here in front of you tonight. We just, we said no at the staff level and left it there. So, the two that are before you, they are substantial when it comes to an overall percentage. 11% is a very significant rate increase. They're aware of it. We're aware of it. None of us like it, but it's really, it's truly regulatory-driven and driven by things that are out of their control and our control. The silver lining to it is because we have such competitive rates, some of the lowest in the region, even with this percent increase, we are still lower than all of our neighboring communities, and much lower than some that are very far away. So, really, this action before you tonight is essentially just more to acknowledge, it's to approve this requested rate increase and acknowledge it, that it's occurring per the terms of the contract. And so, that's what we're asking you to do tonight.
Felix?
I have a question. So, on page 218, it has Fairfield at 2420, correct, the rates?
Correct.
And it has Vacaville at 2580. Just to clarify, is that Vacaville before the new law goes into 2020? Will their rates be raised after that? Is this presently 25?
Their rates, that 2580 number is their current rate. The 2420 is what we'll do. So, I'm not sure how they're handling these similar challenges.
Well, they're going to have to raise the rates because of the new law, correct? That's what?
Probably. But again, the terms of their contract could dictate a different outcome. But they are going to, their ecology is going to have to deal with these same issues. Whether they have already agreed to pay them for those or not, I don't know. And I don't know how their contract was structured.
With the composting.
Right. But I will note that with that elevated rate, and Vacaville's rate, that's for a smaller cart. That's for a cart half the size of Fairfield's.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify.
Sure.
Any other comments or questions? Don't have any request to speak cards, so. Oh, we do. Mr. George Gwynn, yes. Don't want to forget you this time.
Good evening, again. When I was reading the article in the newspaper about this, and I saw 11.1%, I liked it fell out of my chair, because I've seen this room filled with people that were unhappy with the rates in the past that were a lot lower than this. And this is a new record. And I appreciate the more detailed explanation, because the explanation in the paper left out a few things about the other two things that involved the state. But that said, I think you guys still should look around and see if maybe there's a cheaper garbage company out there, or some other way of saving. That is just ridiculous, when you have those kind of increases, and on top of all the taxes we have to pay. There's going to be a lot more taxes that are going to be put out, and the public is not getting the kind of raises and money increases that government seems to get. And this kind of stuff keeps on going, there's going to have to be a crash, because things can't just keep going up when the incomes of people don't go up to match that. There are people that can pay that, it's no big deal, but there's a lot of people that are going to really be hurting. And I think that you guys should look around and see if you can come up with some better solutions, instead of just saying, we'll pass it on, don't even think about it, and go on to the next thing where you want more money. Thank you very much.
Thank you, George. Any other discussion? Entertained a motion then to approve Resolution 2019-237. Been moved by Councilman Tim. Is there a second, please? Seconded by the Vice Mayor. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. We turn then to item number 13. Madam Clerk, please.
Item 13, Resolution 2019-238 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield, approving the plans and specifications and awarding a contract to Mountain Cascade Incorporated for the east-west 36-inch water transmission pipeline, Segment 6A North and Cement Hill Reservoir Bypass and Segment 4-36-inch project, and Resolution 2019-239 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield, approving the execution of agreement for acquisition of temporary construction easement between the City of Fairfield and Gimli, I hope I'm saying that right, Limited and James and Patricia Kennedy for the east-west water transmission pipeline segment 4-36-inch. And our presenter is Ryan Pangeneben from Public Works Engineering.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. Ryan Pangeneben, I'm the interim Assistant Public Works Director, and I'm happy to be here tonight to talk to you about our water system, and in particular, focus on the final phases of the east-west water transmission pipeline. So, just really quickly and briefly, a little background, the Crosstown Pipeline spans over seven miles across Fairfield, and as the name implies, a main purpose of the transmission main is to pump water from the North Bay Regional Water Treatment Plant, located in the eastern area of town, to Cordelia. If you recall, the city has two water treatment plants, and MBR is the city's only source of Sacramento River Delta water. So, once all of the segments of the pipeline are complete, it will add operational flexibility and increased reliability to the delivery of water to the residents of Fairfield. So, this slide provides context to the location of the pipeline and its current alignment in relation to the two treatment plants. Construction has been phased over multiple years, as segments require additional right-of-way, utility relocation, or securing federal and state environmental permits. So, you'll notice that each segment is assigned a color, and for today's discussion, I want to take a closer look at three, the three remaining pieces, which are Segment 6A North, the Cement Hill Bypass, which is circled there, and Segment 4, which is located there in purplish color. So, Segment 6A North is located on Claybank Road. The dash line represents the existing large diameter pipeline in the system. You'll notice that there currently exists a gap between Cement Hill Road and Horizon Drive. And through the construction of approximately a quarter mile of pipeline, this will close that gap and connect the system. The second water infrastructure project is located on Manuel Campos Parkway, and the proposed project will construct roughly 1,400 linear feet of pipeline that parallels the existing system and installs two underground vaults that will allow the, excuse me, underground vault structures that include electrical and communication equipment. That, once completed, these improvements allow treated water from MBR to bypass the Cement Hill Reservoir and continue along the pipeline. So, finally, Segment 4 will construct close to half a mile of 36-inch pipeline and tie into water transmission mains in Broadway Street and Railroad Avenue. A temporary construction easement is necessary between the city and the private landowner, which is circled here on Main Street, and is necessary to facilitate construction near the Union Pacific Railroad tracks. So, these photos are taken of previously constructed segments, and they provide intended to, and are intended to display the general scale and magnitude of the improvements. So, bids were open on September 17th, and seven bids were received, and they were very competitive, as the difference between the low three is only 7%. So, staff concludes that Mount Cascade's contract price of 7.4 million is fair and reasonable for the work that being performed. Funding for this project is provided through the Water Capital Improvement Fund. So, pending approval tonight, there's approximately a four- to five-month lead time in fabricating the pipeline, so the major construction activities aren't anticipated to be completed until March or April of 2020. Staff would like to take this opportunity to thank Susten City staff, as portions of Segment 4 are within their city limits, and staff appreciates their assistance in coordinating this effort. Additionally, Segment 6A North is in close proximity to the under-construction villages at Fairfield subdivision, and close coordination with the developer was required to reach this milestone in the project. And I'd like to also thank the Lewis Development Team for working with us to complete that. Staff intends on utilizing an extensive public outreach process, with notification letters to be sent out prior to the work commencing, and during construction, sending targeted neighborhood social media posts. So, staff's recommendation is to approve the plans and specification, and execute an agreement with Mount Cascade for the remaining segments of the pipeline. Additionally, to facilitate the construction equipment staging, and on the private property, we're requesting a temporary construction easement on Segment 4. I'd be happy to address any questions you have at this time, and thank you.
Any comments or questions, colleagues? Okay. Entertained a motion then to approve, I don't have to request to speak cards. Entertained a motion to approve Resolution 2019-238. It's been moved by Councilman Tim, seconded by Councilman Moy. All in favor? Aye. And Resolution 2019-239, again, moved by Councilman Tim, seconded by Councilman Moy. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. We turn then to item number 14, please.
Resolution 2019-240 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield, creating the Housing Services Department, and Resolution 2019-241 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield, amending the departmental position control list, and Resolution 2019-242 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield, amending the listing of classifications and salaries. And our presenter is Human Resources Director Farbode Perusman.
Mayor, members of the council, before Farbode speaks. I had some questions raised on a couple of these items. It's late this afternoon, and so, I would like to recommend that Resolution 2019-240, which is the creation of the Housing Department, and also Resolution 2019-242, which is amending the list of classification salaries, that those be continued until November 5th, so we can adequately answer the questions that were asked this afternoon.
Very reasonable request. Is, motion to approve?
Oh, I'm sorry. I just wanted to ask him, does that mean the whole item will be removed now?
No, we're still moving forward with Resolution 2019-241, which is the amending the departmental position control list, and we'll walk you through what those items are tonight. And so, basically, the action that would be brought back on November 5th would be the issue of creating the Department of Housing Services. The mission- also, the classification of salaries for the police chief and fire chief. Those will both be brought back on November fifth. And then with the item that we want you to hear tonight, which is two thousand nineteen two forty-one, you need to amend that, because one of the parts of that is dealing with the Director of the Housing Department. So since we're not taking action on the Housing Department, we'd need to pull that out of the item. So we'll walk you through the rest of the positions, though.
Would it make sense to just put it all together later? I mean, is there a timing issue, is what I mean?
There are some timing issues on the other positions, and I think the other positions are pretty straightforward. And so Farbode can walk you through those. If the end of that presentation, if you still feel like you haven't had it all answered, then you could obviously continue it then.
Thanks, Sean. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. So as Sean was mentioning, the three main objectives we are trying to achieve with the requests we've made of you with Resolution two zero one nine dash two forty-one is to be able to improve our service delivery for the different services we provide to the community, to enhance our ability for revenue collection, and also for staff's ability on succession planning and recruitment and retention. So there are multiple positions that we're requesting tonight in different departments. I'm gonna go through that one by one and talk about how the objectives are met by our request. So under the Community Development Department, we are requesting two supervisor positions in the Building Division. One for the Permit Center, be a Permit Center Supervisor, and one for the Building Inspection Side, which is the Supervising Building Inspector. Right now, the CBO, you met him earlier tonight, he basically has ten direct reports. And there are two vacancies, so right now, eight people. But eight individuals reporting to one person has a span of control issue. So one of the reasons that we're proposing these two positions is to address that. The other issue is that the two positions are what we normally characterize as first-line supervisors. So there'd be working supervisors that'll be able to help the permit technicians and inspectors do the inspections and also supervise the work. So that way, we can address some issues as far as permitting approval time and in that way, enhance our revenue collection. We're also requesting a senior management analyst to be added to the Community Development Department and mainly working with the Director, helping with the budget process, but also mostly updating the Northeast and AB sixteen hundred and infill fees, help manage the city's development impact fees, land-based secured financing, fee mitigation bank, and other programs. And that way, this individual can also help the department and obviously the city enhance the revenue collection that we just mentioned earlier, and also have one person really responsible for all those programs to make sure that we're tracking them, make sure that we're- our objectives are met for those programs. The other positions in the Community Development Department are really two current positions. They're vacant. They're associate planner positions. And we're trying to, with your approval, convert one of the associate planners into a senior planner to help with updating the general plan, and the other to convert that position into an assistant planner. And that's really for long-term succession planning and bringing in new talent into the department. Obviously, the senior planner and the help they would provide on the general plan would be very crucial for our growth in the next twenty years and how we plan for that growth. So that's the Community Development Department. In Public Works, there is a position, Traffic Control Signal Technician, we're requesting. This was a position actually was budgeted for in the last round. We did not make the request in the budget process, but it is crucial. We have folks in the shop, in the Traffic Control Signal Shop, that will be retiring in the next several years. We really need a Traffic Control Signal Technician to help maintain about one hundred and seventeen signals, nine thousand streetlights, and about eighteen thousand street signs. So that's the reason for that request. And also, one of the signal technicians who I mentioned earlier, be potentially retiring in the next three years, can really help the new signal technician to get a lay of the land and be able to help our residents, serve our residents better. Finally, in the Information Technology Division, rather, we're requesting a senior IT analyst. And that's for another project we're working on, city-wide project, the Enterprise Resource Planning Software. And Enterprise Resource Planning Software is a software that most organizations use to deal with a variety of their processes, finance processes, HR processes, bill-paying processes. Bigger organizations use it even for maintenance of big buildings, their different facilities that they have. As part of that, we really need to have someone help us with the implementation phase. We're not there yet, and this is a limited-duration request, and we were thinking about three years. When we get to a place where we would be ready to sign on with a vendor and then with the help of the vendor and the staff, implement that software. And that will help us with mitigating against the operational disruptions and maximizing employee engagement for that. We also see that tool as a way to- for retention recruitment in the sense that ERP systems are something that most organizations use now and most public agencies as well. And it really does help different departments, well, help employees in one department do a better job of collaborating with one another and also be able to work with other employees, colleagues across departments, collaborate better. So those are the main reasons why we're making those requests, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Councilman Moy, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. It's a lot there. How were these salaries established?
Well, the salaries, as you will see in the agenda report, they are- they're not established yet. We're really more requesting for you to allow us to create this organizational chart, so to speak, if you will. We still need to go to the meeting confer process. And when we go to the meeting confer process, then that, we will come back to you, to make that presentation to you and talk about what the different proposals were and how we got to that place.
That makes sense. But will you follow the current- how do I say it? The internal alignment?
Absolutely.
Follow that?
Absolutely.
Yes?
Absolutely. Yes. Actually, there is a resolution that does lay that out. And so we will be following that resolution as well.
Okay.
And the same with the job descriptions. We have to- that's just a draft job description. We're gonna be negotiating with bargaining representatives on those job descriptions as well.
That all makes sense. Thank you.
Any other comments, colleagues? I do have some request to speak cards. Mr. George Gwynn, to be followed by Nora Dezon, please.
Am I able to speak about the police and fire positions?
No, that's been taken off the agenda for tonight.
It's been removed from the agenda.
That's what I was afraid of. So I have to come back the fifth, I guess.
That's correct. Right.
Okay, thank you.
Nora Dezon, please. To be followed by Josh Hampton.
Just a general comment, that if the city has funds for new positions, I hope that you will keep in mind that the residents are really concerned about security. And perhaps like this idea about a new department and new director, whatever. We prefer to have that money go to the police department so they can have more officers and we can feel more secure. That's my point. Thank you.
Josh Hampton, to be followed by Tanya Mills, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. Just to echo Nora's sentiment, I agree as a resident that I would much rather see more public safety officers, more police, than new departments being created and new roles for those departments. Thank you.
And this council agrees with you. We're still trying to hire police officers. So thank you. And Tanya Mills, please.
Good evening. Hello. Basically the same. I just wanted to reiterate what they were saying about developing a whole new department. I just can't imagine the hundreds of thousands of dollars we're talking about with salaries and infrastructure, et cetera. And I think it would behoove the community better served with more police officers. There's just a lot of- what would you call it, like lesser crime, you know, bashing in windows, and people literally afraid to walk from the mall to their car. So it would be nice to have more police presence so that we won't have those fears anymore and we can be more, you know, feel better. Thank you.
Thank you for the encouraging suggestions. Thank you. Come back now, and we'll take council action.
Is Resolution number twenty nineteen dash two forty-one with one deletion, which should be the first line on Section one. You should delete Director of Housing Services. That'll come back at November fifth.
Motion to approve? Councilman Moy, is there a second, please? Councilman Picaro, all in favor? Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
Item fifteen, Public Hearing Number Two regarding the transition from at-large to by-district elections. And our presenter is Assistant City Manager Laura Snidman.
Good evening, council. We continue our state-mandated steps in the process to transition to the district elections. And so tonight, we are doing a couple of things. I'm actually gonna start with a commercial. And the commercial is that while this is part of our state-mandated process, we're doing fun and exciting meetings starting tomorrow night. So please come out tomorrow night. We're asking the public to come help actually talk about the actual maps for districts. And that is gonna start at six o'clock at Nelson Monday School Library. And then on Saturday, November the ninth, we're gonna do another community meeting, again, where people can draw maps, get help, look at our processes. That'll start at ten AM at Bethel Community Church. So this evening, you're gonna actually have another public hearing where you have Robert McIntyre, who you met last time, give a similar presentation. And he's gonna focus a little bit more on this time on the number of districts and whether you have an at-large elected mayor or not, in case you all are starting to have some feedback on those couple of items. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Robert McIntyre.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here this evening for the second public hearing for this process. This is quite the turnout. Normally, by this time in the meeting, the room's pretty empty, and it's just us. So thank you for staying. Definitely shows the level of engagement in the community is far greater than most other areas. So once again, my name's Robert McIntyre, and I'm here with National Demographics. And I'm here as your consultant because you've been served with a letter saying you need to transition to by-district elections. And that's not to say that the City of Fairfield has done anything wrong. The goal is just to make sure that as you go through this process, you remain in charge. And if, should you choose to select a map at the end of the process, that we help guide you toward one that's legally defensible moving forward. And so the purpose of the first two public hearings is to actually inform the City Council and the community about the process of drawing maps and what makes a legal map and why we're doing this. And so there are some legal frameworks we use when we do this. And this all centers around the California Voting Rights Act, which was passed in two thousand and two. And what makes it unique is it starts with the foundation of the Federal Voting Rights Act, but then removes two major elements that make it nearly impossible to defend a lawsuit as you could under the Federal Voting Rights Act. And those two, there's four what's called jingles tests. And so you see, we struck lines through the two that have been removed and thus make it really difficult for an agency to show that they're kind of meeting the needs of their public and protecting the voters' will. Now, you're not alone in going through this process. We do- National Demographics is actually out and about five nights a week doing this, and on the weekends as well. As you can see, over two hundred school districts have made the change, thirty-four community college districts in over a hundred and twenty cities. And it seems like, gosh, about twice a year, a couple attorneys who've found a very entrepreneurial vein to use agencies as their ATM card, send out these demand letters and kind of force agencies to either decide, do I want to spend millions and millions of dollars defending against a lawsuit that unfortunately, nobody has yet to win? Or do I just very quickly make the move, knowing that it's a very short-term process now that we get to come back and revisit after the twenty twenty census? And so Palmdale and Santa Monica are the two marquee entities who have attempted to fight, to defend themselves based on the merits of the law and of their case. Neither were successful, and that's not because they didn't put up good defenses or that they did anything wrong, per se. But the law just didn't allow them a pathway to victory. As I said, the law's very one-sided. There are some other agencies who didn't necessarily go through trial, but still spent a fair bit of time and money getting there. And so these are some of the settlements. And we wanted to share that, not as a big looming threat like, oh, my gosh, you must do this, but rather occasionally, you'll have community members who say, gosh, this doesn't apply to us. Don't do it. And that's great. And at National Demographics, we say that's fine if a local agency wants to go that way, but do you have two or three million dollars to set aside to put behind that? Because that's the reality, unfortunately. The other side's attorney gets about a thousand dollars an hour, and it adds up in a real hurry. And so Fairfield has taken a very deliberate approach. You're using the full amount of time possible to drive this process to a conclusion, so that way, your local community has input throughout the process. So as you see on October first, we had the first pre-draft hearing. And tonight is the second pre-draft hearing. The purpose of those hearings are really just to educate and learn. You're also gonna have a community forum on November- it's the ninth, correct? November ninth, as well as tomorrow on October sixteenth. And so you're taking the opportunity to inform the community before draft maps are drawn, and then again, after draft maps are drawn. And you're even providing some tools we're gonna talk about later on for your community to draw some of their own maps and provide input. Now, once the draft maps are drawn, they have to be published for at least seven days before the council can actually discuss them. And that's a very important line we have to draw, because any maps that are submitted need to be submitted through the clerk's office or through our webpage at National Demographics at least ten days before the meeting, because we need two or three days to process them to make sure when you look at them, they've been processed through our GIS software and have all the legal information you need to consider. And so we'll come back for the third public hearing with some draft maps. We'll get some feedback from the community and from the council. And if you want to see any adjustments or entirely different maps, we'll draw those. Come back to the fourth public hearing. And if we've managed to whittle that process down to hopefully one or two maps right at the end, then you'll have the ability, should you choose, to introduce an ordinance and then adopt at the following meeting in February. So some of the rules around districting. And the main rule we have to follow is probably the one rule that rubs people, especially community members, the wrong way the most. And that is, we have to use the last data from the last census, the total population data from the last census. And the last census was in twenty-ten. A lot has happened since twenty-ten. People have moved around. There's been lots of development. And so this is probably the one thing that rubs community members the wrong way the most. We also have to follow the standards on their Federal Voting Rights Act, and we have to make sure that we don't use race as a predominant factor when drawing a council district. Now, it's gonna sound a little bit like I'm talking out both sides of my mouth, because I say we can't use it as a predominant factor, but we do have to ensure that we're protecting protected-class voters or at least maximizing their ability to select a candidate of their choice. There's two criteria when looking at that. There's packing and stacking. And so we don't want to dilute a protected-class voter's vote, but we also don't want to put them all into one area when they could potentially influence two voting districts. And so we don't want to pack them, and we don't want to dilute them. So I understand that sounds a little like I'm talking out both sides of my mouth, but unfortunately, the law requires us to use the information to say, is there an issue? And then on the other side, saying we can't make that the predominant issue. So we're gonna talk a lot about neighborhoods. And that's where we get to the traditional redistricting principles, is the idea around neighborhoods, communities of interest. And the neat thing is about communities of interest is it can be virtually anything your community members want it to be, other than race. And so it can be a common language. It can be an affinity group around a park or a landmark. Virtually any- we see a lot of school districts, like elementary school boundaries, being used as communities of interest, even in city elections, because people get so close to their group of parents, their parent group and their children's group through that process. Also, we want to look at and make sure that when we draw lines, that we follow visible man-made boundaries, so it's clear and obvious where a boundary line would be between council districts. That council districts are compact and contiguous. When I say compact, we think of like a circle, so really, really tight in an area. When I say compact, we think of like a circle, so really, really tight in an area. Now occasionally, because we have to population balance, you'll get these little fingers that come out to balance. But really, we want to make sure that it, when you look at a map, it makes sense. Now, that's real easy to say when you're doing, and I'm going to show you some examples of certain areas and certain cities where that made perfect sense, but you've got real neat geography here that makes that a little tougher to do. And we'll talk about that. We also want to make sure that the council districts are contiguous, meaning we can't have one council district break another one into two. And that's a rather unique characteristic, given your geographical layout as well. And to the extent we can, we want to respect the voters' choices from the prior election. So to the extent that I can find a way to draw maps that will keep each of you in your own council district legally, I would do that because the voters chose to put you in office, the voters should choose to decide whether you stay or not. And to the extent we can legally do that, we will have that conversation. So as I said, we have to use the 2010 census information. And the population of Fairfield, total population, that's not only voters, total population was 105,369. And so part of the conversation thus far has been around how many council districts that you'd like to see. Do you want an at-large mayor? Do you want a rotating mayor? And then how many seats do you want to see up here at the dais? If you wanted to stay with four council districts with an at-large mayor, then you'd be looking at four council districts with roughly 26,342 in population. Now, when we start drawing maps, we're going to talk a little bit about where different protected class voters live. So we're going to talk about your Latino voters, your African-American voters, your Asian voters within your community. You don't have a significant population of American Indians, although they are one of the protected class voters, just not statistically large enough to dominate a particular area for voting purposes. But one of the things we do like to do as we start looking at the weighting of different council districts is we provide this information for every district. And so should you decide to go with four and an at-large mayor, then you'll see a break, this breakdown for every council district. You'll be able to see, you know, do we have mostly renters or homeowners in this area? Do we have mostly, you know, mostly people with college education or high school education or higher or beneath in this area? And so you see lots of demographic information there, languages spoken, for example, that's commonly looked at. So as I said, when we start drawing maps, we have to take care to put together council districts in a way that maximize a protected class group's voting ability to vote in a person of their choice. That doesn't mean somebody who always looks like them. Palmdale's a perfect example where they had to make the switch, the court imposed a switch because they lost their court case. And then African-Americans continued to elect the Latino council member that they liked from before, when the whole thing started. So it doesn't necessarily mean there's a change of the seat, it just means the protected class voter has the ability to pick their person, whoever that may be. And so when we're drawing maps, we do have to look at where different groups live, we just can't make that group, that where they live, the predominant factor in drawing the council districts. And so we see that Latinos are predominantly focused in the center part of town, just east, southeast of the I-80. Asian-American voters are a little more spread out, but we do see pockets in the north and northeast and then one in the south. One thing I do want to point out, when you look in the far south and the very far northeast, those look like big areas, especially when you look at kind of the light blue, that would be the 35 to 50 percent groups. But you have to remember, it's density is what we're looking for here. So that may be a big area, but there may only be 20 people living in that area. So it looks like a big area geographically, but it doesn't have a ton of people. And so density matters a lot when we're looking at these maps. Then when we look at African-American voters, they're particularly concentrated in the center part of the town, mainly east of the 80 as well. And so the purpose of this conversation, besides helping some of the community members understand the what and why of this process, is hear from them on what they consider to be their communities of interest. Surely, people are going to come up to you at the supermarket, but the nice thing about a large-scale format like this is everybody gets to come up and hear each other. And that's important as well. And so some of the things we often hear, and these are not exclusive, this is just meant to spur conversation, we hear about the school attendance boundaries, we hear about natural driving lines and highways and railroad tracks. Sometimes we hear about them from a good side, sometimes we hear about them from a not-so-good side. If you've ever had a railroad crossing that just, well, the gates just won't go up, then you certainly understand on your daily commute how awful that can be and why you'd want a council member to take care of that for you. Sometimes we talk about parks and other areas. And there's one other idea that I want to point out. Very often, we talk about council districts and we think about, I want to influence my council member. But some communities want to be split so they feel like they have two council members who have to help them with their issues. So they feel like they've got, you know, 40 percent of the dais who at least cares about what they have to say. And that's another approach. So as community members come up and talk about what's important to them and how they define their community of interest, would they prefer to be kept in one area or would they prefer to be split across two areas? That's another valid part of the conversation. As we look forward to drawing maps, we wanted to show you some examples of some of the concepts we talked about. So these would be highly compact maps. Here you see the city of Compton and Glendale Unified School District, both from Southern California. You can see with Compton, we have the four quadrants, basically as close as I could get to circles drawn on this map, with little edges jutting out for population balancing. So this would be a very simple, compact map. Glendale Unified has a mountain going right through the ridge where A, B, and C come together. And so you have a geographical divide. And what was funny is, we heard from, the wealthy areas would be up in the top part of town, the most wealthy area, the whole city's quite wealthy, but the most wealthy area would be up in the northern part of Glendale. And it wasn't the northern, the people in the north who said, hey, keep us separate. It was actually the people in the south said, we don't want to be with them. They have a whole different mindset. And that's an important part of the conversation, too. It doesn't have to come from a negative perspective, but it's important that people feel like they identify with the people that they're trying to influence a vote for or influence an election. We also have the idea of the map of considering different spectrum of policy considerations. And so, for example, you see the city of Pasadena was put together in a way where all of the council members touched Colorado Boulevard, which is the economic engine of the city of Pasadena, one of the most successful developments ever. And so that has been and continues to be one of the policy considerations for the city of Pasadena in drawing their maps. The city of South Pasadena, their policy consideration was a very egalitarian approach. We want a broad swath or cross-section of our city in each council district. So they took what I call the pancake approach. If you turn it over, it looks like a stack of pancakes. And that's another policy choice in drawing maps. Up on the top right, we have Central Unified, and you've got a rural and suburban urban area. So up in the top right, near the five, that's the five Interstate Five, you've got some pretty dense populations with suburbs and city. And then when you get out on the southwest, you have a very rural farm area. And so very similarly, the idea was to have these kind of broad spectrum or diverse populations so nobody represented the farmers and, you know, and so you had the farm and the city people. And they were constantly going at it. So this is the solution, the policy solution they came up with. Roseville, the city of Roseville, since they're local, they have some other considerations they wanted to look at. They wanted to look at the police service areas and some of the commercial districts. And so we wanted to share what was happening up here. Obviously, this is laid over your map, but the idea of a different policy conversation that might be worth having on your end. Some of the things we're hearing in some of our other client engagements have to do with looking at possible communities around the, for example, the next-door neighborhoods or the federal opportunity zones. Those are other conversations that some agencies feel fits them better. Now, you've got a great turnout tonight and you've made the choice to give mapping options to your local community. And so you've given them two mapping options. One is where they can take an attendance map or a population map and just start grabbing areas and lumping them together into the number of districts that you decide until they get to the population you're looking for. So as I said, with a four council district map, you'd be looking to build up blocks of roughly 26,183 people. But you also, so here's an example of that kit. And so you might decide, gosh, I really want, I really care about the northeast side of town. I'm going to build my council district for the northeast side of town. I don't have to build a whole map. What it is useful is if somebody says, here's how I would build my council district and they write notes why, those notes will be compiled and put for a council exhibit when we come back and start discussing the maps. And so while that may not be a map you can adopt, it may inform your decision-making when you look at other maps. And so if somebody really just wants to draw part of a map or the area they care about, that's just as valuable as drawing the whole map. And so we have the ability for people to put their contact information if you do decide to draw the whole map and you get close, but maybe you're just off on the population balance. And I'm going to say something that's a little tough to hear the first time, if you're not a big math person. But if you take the variance that you're over the population average and the amount you're under, the difference can't be more than 10 percent. And so I'll provide very, very quick, easy way to look at that. So if you're looking at drawing a map where each council district must be roughly 21,000, then if the over the average and below the average, those two numbers added together can't be more than 2,100. And the courts have basically upheld, if you have a population variance of less than 10 percent between the high and the low, then that meets the equal population clause. And so it's very doable, given the geographic layout of your community, but it's going to be challenging, you know, there's not an infinite number of ways you can break up your community and accomplish that, unfortunately, given the shape of your community. Now, for those who are quant people, who are number crunchers, I feel your pain because I fall into this group. We provided an Excel software tool that allows you to take a very similar map. So the other map had population units, this map has population IDs. And so it's not the number of people that lives in them, it's just basically an area. And so you can take the number from your area ID number on your map and put it in the Excel spreadsheet and say, I'm going to lump all these ID numbers into Council District One. I put a one next to all those in the yellow, and it will work up and tell me how my population balance is doing. And if you look on the bottom half of that slide, right in the center, you see that green cell? It will stay red until you build a district that is within the 10 percent variance. So you know to keep adding areas in to each of your council districts until, basically until it turns green, and then it'll tell you you have a population-balanced map. Now, as you heard from staff tonight, one of the options that I would strong, I would hope you'd consider discussing and if you do, if you are able to work toward a conclusion on this part of the conversation, it does make the second half of this engagement a little easier. And that's the idea of how many districts, council districts, do you feel best would serve your local agency? And then do you like the idea of an at-large mayor or a rotating mayor? You don't have to choose tonight, but it is one of those things that if we can take steps forward on, that makes the process easier, mostly for your community, because people are going to start drawing maps. And if they know how many council districts to draw, that sure makes their job easier. And the people who pick the wrong numbers, start drawing maps, are going to feel a little alienated, you know, if they put a lot of time and energy into it. And so I'm sure they would appreciate whatever conversation you're able to have on that tonight. So some of the things that we talked about was the idea around the number of council districts. So some of the things we see with other agencies is, you know, the more council districts you have, the smaller each district is, which means it's easier for people to walk their council district, which is pretty nice, because then you can shake everybody's hand, you can go to everybody's house. And that's not real easy to do when you have a very large council district. It's not easy to do even when you have a small one, because everybody's so busy and half the time, people aren't home. It also does cut down on potential campaigning costs. And obviously, that's a huge barrier to entry for anybody who wants to run for office, especially for the first time when you don't have the fundraising background. Some of the downsides we see of larger council do include that it's sometimes, sometimes, this is not universal, can be harder to reach consensus. It almost always makes meetings go longer, depending on where we are in the cycle. And of course, it does increase cost to have a bigger council, and it does spread staff time out among more council members as their, as demands increase. Also, the change by ordinance is not really intended under CVRA. With fewer districts, obviously, you're going to have more people in the district. So theoretically, you could have more diversity in each district. With larger districts, you're going to tend to have council members who look at the whole city, not just a small, small area. And it would be, there's less expense. But on the flip side, it can be harder to get a plurality of protected class voters. Campaigns could cost more and more people for each council member to serve. The other area we wanted to talk about was whether you liked the idea of the at-large mayor or the council-selected mayor. And there's a couple ways that you can do the council-selected mayor. Sometimes it's a rotation, sometimes it's just a vote, and it can be whatever the council votes. It doesn't necessarily have to rotate per se. So with the citywide mayor, each voter would theoretically have two people to vote for, their local district and the at-large mayor. And the benefit of that is, of course, the citywide perspective. I personally don't like that note because then the assumption is that council, people running from council districts don't still have a citywide perspective, and that's just not reality. And we're not, we're not living in Chicago here, that's not the sort of horse trading that you might see in a place like that. So I, sometimes I see that conversation get a little out of hand. On the flip side, if you've got a council-selected mayor, then you've got, your mayor is in a council district. And so you've got smaller council districts. The really neat item that we pointed out last time was the idea that rotation encourages civility. Of course, you know, if you're hard on the mayor this time and you're mayor next time, game's, game on, right? And so we have seen that it can actually kind of bring cohesiveness in the group. And so we're hoping tonight to hear from your community around what they see as their communities of interest. We were hoping if the council is so inclined, that there'd be a conversation around the number of council seats and the at-large or rotating mayor concepts. And that, both those would drive the conversation and the project forward in a very major way. I'm free to answer questions before you do your open session or your public hearing.
Any comments or questions? I think council's pretty well briefed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Open the public hearing. We have a number of request to speak cards, and our first speaker will be John Dickerson to be followed by Anna Patero, please.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. That answered most of my questions for tonight. The only thing I would like to ask, is there a possibility we could roll this until past the 2020 census due to the amount of change that happened in the last 10 years in Fairfield and the excessive amount of growth we've had? Train station, housing, everything's blowing up here right now. That would skew your data on creating a district right now. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Anna to be followed by Nora Dezon, please.
Good evening, members of the city council. Mr. Mayor, when I heard about this, the first thing I thought about was population. And I kind of compared the population of Fairfield to the population of Vacaville. The population of Vacaville is about 100,000, and they just voted to expand their representation to six, to five seats, right? And the six seats, I think it was. And I think that's really practical for us because in looking at the data estimated census for 2020, the city of Fairfield is going to be approximately 116,000. That was as of July 7th, 2019. And since 1999, since the 2000 census, just that area in Cordelia alone has risen a lot. So I agree with this gentleman by saying, maybe we should extend this to 2020. But I really agree with the redistricting for three reasons. And to have six people, too, because for practicality, right? Going door-to-door, talking to people, we're having to raise money. And representation, I thoroughly enjoy it when Chuck Tim, when he was running two years ago, came to our community barbecue, got to know everybody, right? He got to give a speech and he knows all of our neighbors. I think we are spread too thin when you're a large community. For example, Kat Moye is everywhere. She's on Next Door, she's on Solano Community Facebook page, and everybody piles on her, no matter what part of the city you're from, right? And so I think having small representation, and it doesn't matter that the meetings are long, we pay our taxes to hear you, see what you're doing to represent us. And so obviously, we're all here. And I heard from a friend of mine who teaches at Benicia, and she says, the nice thing about our Fairfield City Council is that they're very clued in. And so we really appreciate the fact that you all do your hard work, even though you meet a couple of times a week, but there's so much going on that you have to pay attention to. So I think expanding it to six districts so that we can have representation and that decreases the redundancy as well. So thank you very much for listening. I'd like to thank our police officers and our firefighters for your service and for your families for sharing you with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Anna. And Nora Dezon, please, to be followed by Tanya Mills.
Good evening. I don't know if we can just follow the police PSA map, but that sure would work. I want to also express support for this idea. In the past, when I've watched the city council meetings, I've only heard negative comments about this idea, but I think it's fantastic. Because... about this idea, but I think it's fantastic, because I still meet people who say, "Where are you from? Oh, is that part of Fairfield?" They still don't know that we're part of Fairfield, and I've been there for over 30 years. We just feel like we're not represented or recognized, and so it'd be really nice to have somebody who actually cares about our issues and our feelings. So we love this idea. Thank you.
Thank you, Tanya. Mills, please, followed by Ricky Henderson, Ricky Horton.
Hello again. I was kind of under the assumption that you were having to vote whether or not to do this, but now I understand, it's kind of going to happen, it sounds like. So I agree, my main question was, how fluid would these lines be, because the population is constantly changing and growing and expanding? If that would be something that would get revisited every five years or something like that? And I also wanted to say that I think it's awesome, and I think when I read about it in the agenda, I was like, "This is amazing. Why aren't we doing this already?" This is, I think people are going to feel really well-represented, and it's much more fair, efficient, and we mentioned a little bit about longer meetings, but I think when you have a representative that you have a rapport with, that you can share your concerns with, they take that to the meeting. I don't have to come here and wait till nine o'clock to say my three sentences, and all the 20 people in line behind me, you know, we're all at home, watching on TV in our pajamas, and feel like we're confident that our person is going to say what needs to be said for us. So I'm excited about this, and I look forward to seeing it.
Thank you. Ricky Horton, please, to be followed by our final speaker, George Quinn.
Thank you, council members. Again, my name is Ricky Horton, and I'm here to discuss not so much the districting process, but the reasons that we are pursuing this process. The last council meeting, I asked the city attorney, who was here, actually, their assistant, what standing the Southern California law firm had to impose any type of threat on this city, and they have no standing. This is a Southern California firm, there's nobody in Fairfield who's raising their arms, saying this is racial segregation, except our government, city municipal government, saying, "Hey, we're segregating ourselves now by going to districts." And it finds out it's not even going to address the issue that was in the letter, which is saying that our Hispanic community isn't representative, which I still find false, because never to mention Matt Garcia in this letter, who was a council member in 2007 and '08. It says we've never had a Hispanic mayor, which I totally disagree, because Matt Garcia was an honorary mayor. Maybe he wasn't elected by the people, but he was through ordinance, selected as an honorary mayor. So the things that I want to address in this letter, and actually, before I start again, Mr. Mayor, I apologize, last weekend, I did not make myself clear enough that I understand your guys' positions. This process is an agenda item, it's open to public comments, and for you restricting any of our times, I find it as a violation of your oath of office to protect and defend our inherent right to speak on this issue. This is an agenda item, so I think restricting our time is actually violating your oath of office. But I will make this brief, I will talk fast. So the one thing I did want to address on the letter, it says that the Fairfield's at-large system dilutes the ability of Latinos. I disagree with that. We have had diversity on this council, and we continue to have diversity on this council. So that allegations on that attorney's letter, that's found in the September 17 agenda item, the full packet is there, you can download the letter, as well as the response from our city attorney, says that the at-large system dilutes the Latino community. I don't necessarily disagree with dividing us up into districts. I disagree with this process, and why we're forced to do it, and addressing the Latino community as saying that they're not represented. We are not Latino-Americans, or Black Americans, or any other ethnic race Americans. We're Americans, we're united, and I think we should stay united. But if you want to divide the council, yeah, the council members into districts, then there's a way to do it, but we shouldn't be forced to do it based by threats. And I see this letter as extortion, saying if you don't do it, we're going to demand money, and that is a form of extortion. The outsiders named Doris Panduro, she never had any complaint, I talked to Doris, they didn't even spell her name right on the threatening letter. Now, at the end of the letter, it's obvious that they have no standing. They say they will be filing a court action on the, within this jurisdiction, on behalf of the people of Fairfield. There is nobody in Fairfield, to my knowledge, that feels that we are so segregated, and they're so racially divided, that we need to racially divide our city into districts, so we can have proper racial recognition on this council.
And Ricky, if you could wrap it up, please.
Yeah, I will, I'm just about there. The main thing here, now, Chuck Tim, you asked the city attorney if this was a law that requires us to move to district. Can you let me know what the attorney, district attorney said, because he wasn't on film?
What I was told, what we were all told, is that every agency that has been sued or gotten a letter, has lost. They cannot defend under the Voters Rights Act. So it's based on case law, and when you lose, and you saw the numbers, about 66,000 to 22 million. Nobody has fought this and prevailed in court.
Well, okay, this is my last comment, Mayor. Please just allow a little bit more. Under section 1430, excuse me, let me get that exact number, 14030, the city attorney failed to mention, and it's in the same code, that says they can be awarded attorney's fees if they win. However, we, the prevailing defendant, shall recover all costs if the court finds the action to be frivolous, unreasonable, and without foundation. And I'm here to say that I've studied the letter and the threatening letter, the letter is frivolous, it's unreasonable, and without foundation, and there's no reason for us to be forced into this action.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Councilman Moy, please.
Well, quick, Ricky. We have had a Hispanic mayor, his name is Manuel Campos, he's my second cousin by marriage, and the, it goes on and on, really, quite frankly, he was also a city councilman. And my uncle, who's Hispanic, was not elected here, but he was the guy who originally did Allenwood Park. So we have a deep history here of Hispanics being very involved, along with African-Americans. We've had an African-American mayor, so on and so forth. John Maras never said that, but he was Native American, belonged to a tribe, and every month gets money from the tribe. So, you know, it goes on and on, but we don't all just stand here with these, you know, to say, "Hey, hey, hey." The attorney used two people and said they, you know, were Latinos who lost, Abi Batista, who's Filipino, both of them are, Mr. Martinez, Filipino. So they just, he just looked at their surnames, ripped them off, didn't talk to Ms. Panduro, and this is where we are. But the fact...
Well, that just goes to prove my point, that this is unreasonable, without foundation. And again, if we do go to districting, I would concur with the rest of the members here. Let's do this after the 2020 census.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And our final speaker, Mr. George Quinn, please.
We had a question by Chuck Tim, I think.
Thank you for being patient.
Good evening, no problem. I think Mr. Horton raised some good issues. That said, I've gone to the Fairfield System Unified School Board meetings for a couple of decades at least, and they've had the new system for some time. And I recall one of the members was appointed, and then ran at least a couple of times, and never has anybody run against him. And it's the same way with a lot of judges, they get appointed, nobody runs against them. And that's not the kind of system we really want. I think a bigger problem we have is regionalization. A perfect example is the bridge tolls. The numbers are stacked against Solano County, because we don't have the population, plus also the MTC board gives more weight to where the population is. So that result is we got stuck with the bridge toll increase, even though Solano County voted 70 percent against it. Similar numbers for Contra Costa and Sonoma. So unfortunately, things seem to be going that way in big numbers. The UN has Agenda 21, it's another way of making us serfs on the global plantation. I think that's a bigger problem than what we have with this redistricting thing, and really need to keep things small and local, instead of having somebody way off deciding what's good for us. So I really hope that you guys will put a lot of thought into what you do here, because it's very important, and it can have pretty tragic consequences if you make the wrong decision. Thank you very much.
Thank you, George, and I don't have any other request to speak cards. Councilman Tim, please.
Yeah, I wanted to answer, very good questions about can we put this off till 2020, and the answer is no. We will get sued, and as soon as they file the lawsuit papers, we're on the hook and the meter runs. And that attorney charges $950 an hour. So we're going to do the same thing next year. These maps are going to be good until the next census, obviously, 2020, and then in 2021, we redraw for 2022. So you can see, I think, the, I don't want to say it's idiotic, but it is, and it is what it is, so we'll just deal with it, and we'll move on, and now I guess we'll figure out how many folks we want. We're over a barrel, folks. We don't have $3, $4 million to take a chance on something like this, and if that's what the public wants, go to districts, let's move forward, Mayor.
And that's why we have the public hearings. I want to thank all of you for speaking tonight, and urge your colleagues, your friends, your neighbors, the folks you work with, the ones who occasionally, urge them to get involved in the process, and attend the next public hearing, please. Thank you very much. We'll close the public hearing. Move on then to item number 16, please.
No. You may want to have some discussion about directions on the map with respect to the two issues, which would be, one, number one, the at-large mayor versus a mayor stuck by the council, and also how many districts you may be interested in.
Do we want to do that tonight, or do we want to wait?
Well, you can if you want, and what Mr. McIntyre suggested was, it'd be helpful for him in doing the maps, to get, you're not bound by that decision, but it could be helpful if you had a desire maybe to consider how to approach those two issues. And again, you don't have to tonight, but it is helpful to the demographer to have some direction there as to where you may want to go on this.
Open two suggestions, please.
Yeah, I think the longer we put it off, I mean, obviously, you know, we're going to make a decision, probably at least by the next council meeting, but, you know, I mean, I have my own opinions, my own strong opinions about this. I happen to agree with the people that spoke tonight regarding the expanding of the council, and here's why. You know, we have a whole east side of Fairfield that's not represented, okay? I know Cordelia spoke tonight, and I understand that, but we have a whole east side of Fairfield from basically, you know, Texas Street over, that's not represented, that's a huge part of town. Those people there, they need representation too. I think if we expanded it to six with an at-large mayor, that would represent the city of Fairfield, just like Vacaville just went six and one, and they're smaller than us, and we're going to be much bigger than them come 2020. That would be my suggestion. I think we need more representation on that side.
Councilman Tim, please.
I concur with Mr. Ricaro, for the same reason, six districts, but also an at-large mayor. And I don't know if you guys know what an at-large mayor does. He represents not only the city of Fairfield, but the city of Fairfield and regional boards throughout the state. They travel a lot, they sit in, and I think you garner more respect if you are an at-elected, or if you're an at-large elected mayor, than something that just kind of rotates, Rochambeau, you're turning the bucket, or we don't like you, or whatever. But also too, and what the demographer said, is it actually gives you now two voices on the council. Your council member of choice that you elected, and also the mayor, because you get to vote for him too. So six plus one, Mayor.
Councilman Moy, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will concur with both of the councilmen who just spoke, but I will say that I disagree that anybody in the city is not represented at this time. I could sit down and tell you that even though Cordelia feels like it is not represented, these cross, the big money that we just put in for the water lines is so the people in Cordelia can have water from both of our plants, not just one. They have the best park, it just got finished, better than anything else in this city, except for, I think, Rockville Park, but totally different. You know, I mean, it goes on and on. We put more money in there than anyplace else, except for now moving into the downtown, and people will say, "Oh, you know..." So I disagree, and I work in every edge of this city. I talk to people from every edge of this city, so I find it offensive when people say somebody's not being represented. I work really hard, and I know all my colleagues do too, to make sure that you're covered. But given that, I do believe that we should go ahead and break it up. I have a question about the council chambers. When you have seven people sitting up here, and you only have this many mics, do you share a mic back and forth? This one's broken anyway, but what the hell?
The Planning Commission has seven members, and that's accommodated, and also, you know, we're getting ready to do a major renovation in council chambers, and we're taking that into consideration to accommodate a larger group.
So I think that we should do the same, that we should have six districts and one at-large mayor for the same reasons that they spoke about, and that is, you are going to get some balkanization, which means people saying, "Hey, Cordelia, we're, you know, I need more out here, and, you know, you have enough over there." And so you're going to get that. But if you have one mayor, she can handle, you know, going to each of the districts, and making sure there are two people that you're going to talk to. So she can listen to two, right? And so it makes sense to me to have her doing that, and then have, you know, six individuals from the districts across there, and that way, people can choose more closely to where they live. It is easier for people to run for office. The mayor's still going to have to raise a lot of money when he or she is challenged. So, you know, but that's a decision they make. So I agree with my colleagues on that.
Madam Vice Mayor, please. This is going to be fun now.
No, I'm going to agree with my colleagues as well. I just do want to reiterate my disdain for this approach of really extorting the city into doing something that we are all capable of deciding how and when to do it on our own, and it's just the reality of the situation. And, you know, I do want to go on the record also for saying that, you know, I hope this does not become a tool of divisiveness in this community, where one district is pitted against another district for whatever reason. I know that we're bigger and better than that, but I've seen it happen in other cities, and I just want to make sure that, you know, we remain a united front. We're Fairfield, California, and that's what we need to remain. So by adding one more voice to the table, I think hopefully will strengthen our community, and we have to embrace the journey that we're on now, because the train has left the station. So we are all on the train at this point. So I just want to thank my colleagues for making all the points that they made. I agree with them wholeheartedly, and we just have to move forward.
But to summarize now, are we talking about six districts? And we want to continue with a directly elected mayor? There's your direction, okay? But the next public hearing, we need to have more people come and express their concerns about drawing the maps, making certain that the result satisfies everybody, not just a few of us. And I look forward to the new council. It may include some of us, and it may have some other folks, but adding the additional council seat makes perfectly good sense to me, and I think it would become a very efficient one. And the city manager already explained that this whole council chamber will be reconfigured, so it'll be up to speed, up to date, so, okay? Any other concluding comments? And we do get along pretty well. So we'll close that item, and we'll go to item number 16. Madam Clerk, if you would, please.
Public hearing and approved resolution 2019-243 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield, denying a general plan amendment, GPA, 2017. of Fairfield denying a general plan amendment, GPA 2017-2, and zone change, CC2017-2, and upholding the Planning Commission's denial of a tentative subdivision map, T72017-3, development review, DR2017-6, and community design plan, DR2017-7, for the Gold Hill Village III project, a 79-unit, single-family subdivision located at the northeast corner of the Lopes and Gold Hill Road, roads intersection, APN 0180-080 to 290, 0180-080 to 320, 0180-080 to 330. And our presenter is Associate Planner Amy Crymeyer.
I'm having some mouse issues. It'll be just one moment. There we go. All right, so tonight, good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Tonight I will be presenting on Gold Hill Village III, a proposed residential subdivision. So the project is currently located on an 11.44-acre vacant parcel located at the northeast corner of Gold Hill and Lopes Road. An existing Powermark gas station and convenience store is located adjacent to the southwest edge of the site, and an existing sewer lift station is located at the northern end of the site. The project is west of I-680 and surrounded by the existing Southbrook and Cordelia subdivisions. The applicant is proposing to develop the site as a 79-unit residential subdivision. To facilitate the proposed development, the applicant is requesting a general plan amendment for the site to RLM, low-to-medium-density residential, a zone change to RLM, low-to-medium-density residential, environmental review, tentative subdivision map request, development review, and community design plan request. Based on a detailed analysis by staffed, which analyzed the project's inconsistency with the general plan as well as access concerns, the Planning Commission denied the tentative subdivision map, development review, and community design plan requests, and recommended that the city council deny the general plan amendment and rezoning requests at their August 28th meeting. So tonight, staff is recommending that the council adopt, hold a public hearing, and adopt resolution 2019-243, denying the general plan amendment and zone change request, and upholding the Planning Commission's denial of development review, community design plan, and tentative subdivision map requests. If you have any additional questions on the project, or you would like to hear about your alternative actions, if you choose to approve it, I would be happy to discuss those with you now or after the public hearing.
Do you have any comments at this point for Amy? Okay, we'll have a number of requests to speak cards, so we'll open the public hearing, and our first speaker will be Sharon Hall, Blythe, please, to be followed by Tanya Mills.
Hello, Mayor and members of the city council. I need to. I've been a resident of Cordelia for 33 years. What we're seeing is, well, we're being inundated is how it feels, with small footprint, infill development, which is severely impacting our schools and our roads. We, I believe that I've heard that you want to consider commercial development there rather than the residential, which we, I would support. We could use, you know, somewhere a grocery store, because sometimes Safeway, the library, that whole area, and Green Valley is just not accessible due to traffic issues for Cordelia residents. There are just times of the day where it's just impossible to get there. And so we could use a Trader Joe's, a Sprouts, you know, something in that area, a library, a tutoring center for all of the students that live there, all of the kids that live there, could use a tutoring center of some sort, or a tutoring business would be nice. I, well, yeah. And the other thing is, with all of this development, I understand that you can require the developer to either provide a park, a school, or some infrastructure maintenance. Currently, the trail system that runs parallel to Silver Lake Drive is a, it's just deteriorated to trip hazards, it's just a mess. And it is, it is a liability, it's a serious liability. That is a heavily used trail. It's used by horse riders, school running teams, Rodriguez Cross Country Team, Rodriguez Soccer Team. The school resource officer uses the trail to do truant sweeps, whatever, city vehicles. The trail is just used by many, many people, and it has deteriorated. So I would urge the city council to mandate that if the developer is going to continue to build, 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 that they contribute to the maintenance of the area and replace the trail system. And I would encourage you and urge you to adopt 2019-243. Thank you.
Hello again. I live about two miles from this proposed housing development, and I, and probably about 99% of the other people who live in this area that I do, implore you to please adopt this resolution and keep the general plan and the zoning as it is. We cannot handle any more houses over there. We need commercial retail amenities desperately before even thinking about adding in more houses. We have one shopping center with one grocery store, and it's, she just said it, I mean, it's so crowded all the time. We just, the streets are crowded, the schools are crowded, and we just hope that you will adopt this resolution until Gold Hill Village, no.
Judith Hutsler, please, and then Susan Hoffman, please.
I've been in Cordelia. I was one of the first homeowners that Sino built the homes for. Been there 37, 38 years. Every time there's more houses built, there is a traffic check to see if it's going to increase traffic. Every time there's a new housing district, no, it's not going to increase at all. So I've just sat there and watched housing track after housing track. Streets remain the same, still not going to cause a problem. It can take me 45 minutes to get from my house to Safeway, which takes five minutes. When the schools let out, when the schools start getting off the freeways, it's unbelievable. And if Sino and the city of Fairfield removes that commercial property, I don't know why Sino or, and the city of Fairfield couldn't give some concessions of some kind to a commercial people to come put a store there. Can't they give them concessions? I know they won't make the tax money. I know that Sino won't make the money from the houses that they would sell, but the city of Fairfield would see all the people that are in Cordelia, all the things they deal with. My granddaughter lives there. She had to get in a lottery to go to the middle school, to go to the traditional middle school. She couldn't go there, she wasn't picked. Then she was picked, and now she's there. I keep getting heard that the schools aren't overcrowded. How can that be possible? It can't be possible. I recommend that you keep what you did the last time. Thank you.
I'm pleased, to be followed by Nora Dezon.
I have been a resident of Cordelia Village for 25 years. I have watched it grow and grow and grow. And as of now, there's about 860 approved housing out there. If this goes in, it'll go up to over 900. I do not want another housing complex there. It's crowded enough, the traffic is horrible, the infrastructure is not there or not maintained. Councilwoman Moy said the big park down the way. Yes, we have a big park down the way, but they don't maintain the small park by Oakbrook School. Took us three years to get new light posts in the area, which they just replaced. The light posts are metal, they don't, they work great, and the light's good, but they look like they went through a catalog and picked the cheapest one there was. We need commercial. The new Flyway Center is going to go in across the way off of, I can't think of, but on the other side of 680. That's going to cause more traffic in the area. If there, this was remaining to be commercial, we, we should have maybe a sandwich shop, a coffee shop, a yogurt shop, anything over there, even a grocery store, a small grocery store even. But it would benefit once the Fly Center was open, if we had that, because it would bring jobs for our youth and for us to have somewhere to go to congregate. Let me see. Red Top Road needs to be widened. They have the new enclave being constructed out there, and it's, it's two lanes from Rodriguez all the way to the freeway. You cannot leave your house to get out of Cordelia Village. I don't know where any of these councilmen or council actually live. If you lived in Cordelia, you would understand our problems getting in and out, going to the grocery store, going anywhere for, at early morning or afternoon. And it backs up, I live real close to Silver Creek and Lopes. Those cars, they come down the bike path, down Silver Creek, make a U, and go back to the stop sign, so they don't have to stop in the line of traffic. It's a hazard for kids. Lopes is a Speedway, and the opening of this new development is on a curve, not very well-planned. I would consider you keep the Planning Commission's denial, please.
Good evening. There are over 3,000 homes in Cordelia Villages, and yet we have only one retail establishment, that one Power Market. I mean, that's just astounding, that by itself. Next, we have horrible roads, like it was explained Red Top Road is, still just two lanes from Rodriguez to the freeway. Traffic is pretty horrendous. Then we have insufficient traffic management, and we, although, you know, it's commonly known, the schools just don't have the capacity anymore to handle kids from these new projects. And the enclave is already in progress, and wonder how are those kids going to be accommodated at the local schools? Okay, that should be enough. Think about us, our concerns. That should be enough for you to uphold the, the suggestion that we reject this project. But on top of that, Benicia has its single source of water, it has its raw water line running through that site. It's only three to four feet from the surface. And I talked to the engineer, city engineer, and he explained to me, the lines have been there, undisturbed, never had to deal with the pressures of new homes on it, and then the, you know, heavy garbage vehicles that would come by weekly. And they foresee that there'd be some cracks. And we can have, they could have sewage going in and contaminating their water, they could have chemicals that are used contaminating the water. Do we really want to be responsible for that? I don't think so. I, I think you should think about us and what everybody has already said, and that should be enough. But on top of that, why would we want to contaminate the water that Benicia relies on? I hope you will turn this down just as the staff recommends. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan Huffman.
I have a couple more bites.
Well, I like two bites of the apple, so I'm sorry for calling you twice. Josh Hampton, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and all the council members. I feel like I just moved in from everyone who's been here for two decades, three decades. I only moved in a decade ago in Cordelia, right next to the middle school. And it's actually, if I come home anytime around 3:00, it is legitimately dangerous for me to turn onto my street from the amount of cars that are illegally parked. And granted, people are picking up their kids, I understand. But if I try and park there, I can't see the kids on the sidewalk. If I'm leaving, it's even worse, because I can't, literally cannot see either side to turn left or right if it's safe for me to proceed out of that street. And if there are even more homes built, that's only going to exacerbate the problem. More so, though, this is the final property in this area that could potentially be used for commercial, and we actively and desperately need that commercial, those places to shop. We go out of our way, me and my wife, to not leave the home, to go into Fairfield proper, due to the amount of time it takes to get to, say, the Walmart, to get to Rayleigh's, to get to Safeway, et cetera. The amount of time it takes to get out, especially if we accidentally leave around when school's out, or if there's bad traffic, there's an accident on 80, and everyone diverts out to take the surface roads, it's horrendous. The Powermark, we never shop there. It's, it's not great. I mean, I'm sure other folks would agree with me. It's, it's overpriced, things have been on the shelf for months, weeks, what have you. I never get gas there. I actively avoid it. We need more shopping options. So I would absolutely please deny the, the motion to amend the general plan.
Troy Oster, please, and then Nancy Barrett.
Councilman, Mr. Mayor, thank you for your time. I know that it's getting late, and I'll try to be brief. I'll try not to repeat anything, because obviously everyone already understands that there's traffic problems. We all know that. I'm even newer than you, three years only, yeah. So I'm the baby. But I, I was really happy that the city planning office held a town hall to make sure that all of us in the community were aware of what was being planned in the Gold Hill Project. They invited us all to come out and talked us all through it, so that we would all have clarity and visibility to what was going on. And at that meeting, I talked with a very sweet elderly woman who had been living here in Cordelia for over 30 years, and had told me the story about how she had come to buy her house there, one of the first houses there, and that at the time, Sino had been selling her the house, had told her about how it was new and up and coming, and there wasn't a lot out here yet, but that, don't worry, you know, we have plans in the general plan for commercial properties to come out there. This is going to be an up and coming neighborhood. And she had, you know, bought her house there with the idea in mind that, that this would be a complete community, not just a bedroom community full of houses so that people could commute to other areas to work, that it would be a complete community. And she waited 30 years for them, watching them convert every single commercial real estate property there to more residential. And she was disheartened by the idea that this was the final property in our area, in our community, that would potentially be able to service the community with what it truly needs. And what everybody here all agrees needs is some sort of commercial property, retail property, to service the people that live here. And to allow them to rezone the final property to retail, or to residential, rather, would essentially tell the entire community of Cordelia that the desires and the needs of that community are unimportant to the city of Fairfield. And I would hope that you would not vote to, to allow them to take away this final strand of hope that we have, that we will somehow get what we've been looking for for 30 years. And at least hold Sino accountable for the fact that they told the entire community so far for 30 years that they would have something to service that specific need for the community, and then allow them to sort of get out of their obligation to provide that to the community. Everyone so far has commented about the turnout tonight, and everybody has mentioned that it's so great that the community is here and in force to, to voice their opinions and to be part of their community. The biggest reason for that is because, as you see, they're all still here. Everyone who was part of earlier agenda items left, they didn't need to be here any longer. Everyone is out here today specifically because they care deeply about this specific proposition. They want this proposition to be upheld. They want to abolish the, the ability. They want to abolish the, uh, the ability for CNO to take away our final ability to have some sort of commercial or retail, uh, establishment in our area. And we wanna stop them from continuing to build more homes in an already crowded area. So, um, thank you very much and I hope you continue in the vein that everybody else is gonna say, "Thank you."
Thank you. Uh, Nancy Barrett, to be followed by Maureen Quarter, please.
Good evening. I'm a little nervous, you make me nervous, sorry. I've been a resident of Green Valley since 1999, so I've seen firsthand how much this area has grown since then. I'm here to oppose this development. I attending the planning, I attended the planning department's meeting when this proposed development was on the agenda. I was happy to hear the city staff and school district recommend to the planning community, community, committee, that this parcel not be rezoned residential for the various reasons they pointed out. I understand that CNO is looking for their best interest. If they can generate profits right away, why not? But I also think we need to realistically look at the impact this has on our community. We, the residents, are the ones that have to deal with your ultimate decision for years to come. We have all shared with you how many occasions, on many occasions, how bad traffic is becoming when the infrastructure cannot keep up with it. It's beyond frustrating that it can take you almost 20 minutes or more to get out of your neighborhood during the peak morning school and commute chaos. That's what it is, chaos. And by the way, my sister pointed out that where Red Top and Watts meet, they merge into one lane to Highway 80 to support all of these homes. We see how many kids are being cramped in our schools and there are no funds that I'm aware to build a new school. How unfair is it to a potential new home buyer into this area, to buy into this area and then find out that their local school does not have the space and now they have to figure out how to transport their child to school across town? This is not a solution. If our local schools cannot accommodate the local growth, then we have big issues. We already have over 800 approved units in development and we really have no clue how this will truly impact us when it comes to traffic in schools. Reality will hit us when we have them all occupied and we can provide actual dat- data rather than estimated projections. Another point I wanna make out is with this construction of the Pacific Fly Center, we really have nothing to offer the visitors if we want them to dine out or shop locally. Absolutely nothing. They will have to travel north and hit the fast food establish- establishments or head out of the area into Benicia. In addition, if you wanna attract employers into this area, they will need to offer its employees with local retail and eating establishments. The newer generation wants careers, but they also want a certain lifestyle that is compatible with what is socially valued today.
And would you begin summarizing, please?
This commercially zoned land has the opportunity to not only support the community in a positive way, but also the Pacific Fly Center and any future employer. To be honest with all of you, had I known back in 1999 when I bought my house, that we would just settle in a, in being a bedroom community with no little to growth in retail, shopping, or local employment, I would have considered paying more to live in a city that embraces and actively thinks outside the box to provide its residents with reasons to shop and dine locally. Napa and Vacaville have my business and I know many of my neighbors are doing the same. I urge you to listen to the residents and give our area the opportunity to grow commercial and retail components. We have the potential, we have the land, we just need to plan for it. And I'm willing to stick it out, but I need you to believe that it's also possible. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Maureen Quarter, to be followed by George Kennedy, please.
Good evening. Um, I'll make this very brief. Um, I know everybody's already kind of hit on all of these points and we're all very tired, so, um, I would, uh, implore you to adopt the resolution to deny the rezoning for several reasons. Uh, traffic studies, um, have been done years ago and they don't take into account any of the current or pending homes that have already been approved but haven't actually been built yet. Uh, drastic improvements are needed for, uh, in- infrastructure in the entire area before adding any more residential. I'm concerned about how everyone in our giant community is going to escape in the event of an emergency with tiny little roads that only allow, you know, s- a small amount of cars to go through at any given time. Um, there's no local resources for food or basic necessities. Uh, there's increased crime, which is getting little attention, and adding more homes is not gonna help. With 3,000-plus homes, we deserve a police substation in our area. Uh, the city staff, the school district, the city of Benicia are all against the rezoning along with the, um, affected residents, so I implore you to please do not rezone and also, nice parks don't stop crime. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. George Kennedy, to be followed by Louis Parsons, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. George Kennedy, 30-year resident of Cordelia. Uh, first off, before I get into my thing, uh, see something, say something. You got a, uh, overhead, uh, thing that, I know you guys are hard-headed, but that could fall and, you know, cause a CTE to you guys. So, the recess light there is hanging and as the air comes on, it's swagging, so I don't wanna see you guys hurt. So, now on, now on to business. Lopes Road is a speed trap. Uh, we've had, we've had a fatality on Lopes Road, um, a couple blocks from my house several years ago, so we know that's an issue there. That curve is horrible. As mo- as, as you all know, I've been involved with the politics in, in Cordelia for 30 years that I've lived there. And I've worked with CNO, including this project, and I told him how terrible, it was the worst project I have ever seen them come up with. Putting a street on a curb where several years ago, a FedEx truck went around the corner a little too fast and he ended up almost on, on Interstate 8, on southbound 680. So, there is a lot of speeding on, on Lopes Speedway. Cordelia, Green Valley, it's all Cordelia because 30 years ago, Green Valley Road was Chuck Supercheever, right? We didn't have anything out there. So, uh, we do have a council member from the Cordelia-Green Valley area and that is, that is Chuck, so I don't wanna, I don't want anybody to short that we aren't represented there and we have been represented, um, by all of you, so I do appreciate that. Pacific Flyaway Center's coming? That's gonna be the largest airport probably in the world, right? It's not gonna be propeller planes, but it's going to be the lar- it's the largest migratory route in the, in the world, so we, we need to protect that. Those people are gonna need services. Where, you know, Seekonk wants to pull that, those possible services away before it gets built because they know it's going to be needed then. People have mentioned parks, 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 type thing. You know what? 22 years, I'm still looking for my park. So, right? Oh, we got a big park, but AB 1600, Quimby, we're supposed to have neighborhood parks as well. And that was on the shortlist when, when, um, when, uh, Harry was mayor and Bob Leland was our, uh, finance and he was so good with the shell game, all of a sudden our, our four-year plan for the neighborhood park disappeared. And I know that Rick knows about the traffic in the area because one of your first meetings as a council member, you talked about your kids going to Rodriguez and the horrible traffic trying to get them from a one-lane road so you could get back uptown. So, we all know that the tra- or, but, you, you were, you, you did, you did talk about that though, right? Yeah, yeah, so, but, it's carpool, it's an issue there and it, it's a consistent, you know, I mean, I live across from a middle school, so, you know, it could take me 10 minutes to get out of my court, so, um, but otherwise.
George, would you summarize, please?
Please uphold the, uh, uh, planning commission's decision to deny CNO. Thanks.
Thank you. Louis Parsons, please. Anyone else choosing to speak on this item should submit a card?
Hi, thank you.
Louis, thank you.
Uh, my name's Louis Parsons, I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. I was late, but I'm glad this was the last item on the agenda, there was that terrible refinery fire. I wanted to just start off by, uh, reiterating that, um, there are some alternative actions tonight, um, and that would give us an opportunity if one of the alternative actions were, uh, selected to present sort of what we're proposing here. Um, I've heard a lot of, um, concerns both tonight and in the past about what we're proposing here. We, uh, I wanna reiterate that, um, you know, I do work for the CNO family and we're certainly not just home builders, um, we're large-scale, uh, commercial developers, um, we're constantly developing commercial and managing commercial property. We actually, um, I've shared with some members of the audience, um, the substantial work we've done over the years, uh, in trying to get commercial users to, um, uh, do something at the site. Literally dozens of site plans, uh, dozens of different brokers, dozens of different marketing strategies, and, um, the conclusion over years and years and years is that it's just not really a viable site. There are other areas that we own in very close proximity that are both business commercial and highway commercial, um, that we do think are much more viable. But what I'm hoping is to go over those things, tonight you don't have the, uh, secret document with all the studies, um, before you, you don't have our site plan, um, you don't have our brokers or marketing experts to show this to you. And all we're looking for is an opportunity to present this, to you present this publicly, um, which we'd have the opportunity to do if you selected, uh, one of the options and the alternative action. I do think, I do hear the concerns, uh, of the public, but there are a myriad of reasons why, um, that, and, and we've tried, that, that shows that this site's not viable for a commercial user. And so, all I would, all I'd wanna do is show that, uh, to you, present that information to you. Some specifics that have been brought up tonight is, you know, the Red Top widening. Um, we have a requirement in our development agreement, uh, to widen that road. Um, the project's in design right now, so it will be widened to 80. So, that's something that's imminent, um, something that's tied to a permit, uh, triggering point, um, so that's gonna happen in the near future and we're, we've already engaged the engineers to design it. I can go into a bunch of other comments that were brought up. You know, the raw water line, I wanna point out that that is raw water, the water line does go under right-of-way. Um, we've worked, uh, in and around that line for 20 years, um, so I do understand those concerns, but it, I wanted to say that is untreated water, but we're just respectfully asking the opportunity to be able to come back, present the project in, uh, its total, go over all the technical reports, and then really leave that decision up to you with a full scope and breadth of everything that we're presenting. So, I'm here tonight to answer any questions and I really appreciate the opportunity to speak on this.
Councilwoman Moy, please.
When's Red Top gonna get widened up? You said it's, uh, it's...
Yeah, we have a trigger point, I, it, don't quote me on this, but there's a, I think it's, I think there's a 70-unit, um, trigger point between either building the apartments or the, uh, enclave at Red Top subdivision that we're cur- currently building. So, prior to that, we have to have that road widened.
Prior to how many units?
I think it's 70 or 90 units.
Okay, so...
One of the other. One of them has to do with a, there's another requirement, one of them's 70, one of them's 90, but I don't, but it, it, there's a definite trigger point, which is why we're already designing it right now. So, we're planning on doing both the widening of Red Top and the, um, reconstruction of the, there's a pump station along that too. We're planning on doing that, uh, concurrently with Phase 2 of the enclave at Red Top subdivision.
How many lanes?
Four lanes.
Four lanes?
All the way to 80.
To 80?
Yep.
All right. And what about the, um, can you speak to me at all and maybe, I don't know, Mr. Mayor, is this too much right now to ask about some things like the water thing that was brought up? Is this too much for now?
No, I think we need to get as many answers tonight as we can. Absolutely.
Sure.
What about that Benicia water line under there? It, it, that concerns me.
Sure.
But i- if I could make a statement, um, Benicia, of course, we're not, nobody's into poisoning somebody else's water, we don't want any of that. Benicia, though, is good at, um, ignoring the fact that there is a housing crisis in the state. And that's why we have, one of the reasons why we have so many homeless people and those people are bothering people out in Cordelia and Green Valley. I'm not saying that these houses are gonna cure it, 'cause it's not. Um, it's gonna take some other things that we don't need to talk about now, mental health, those kinda things. But the bottom line is, I need to know...
Thanks.
Are you g-?
Sorry, you told me I wasn't close enough to the microphone. Sorry.
Oh, okay. In construction of this, if you do, if you're able to, are you gonna disturb those lines?
No, we're not gonna, we're not gonna disturb those lines and, um, right now, the land that the line is within is an easement, and so they have various easements, they have easements with the city.
Yes.
Because that line is actually within, uh, portions of city roadways where, you know, portions of Lopes Road, the, the water line is in there. And so, we've been dealing with this line for years, whether it's in some of our previous subdivisions or recently built subdivisions. And so, the line, we pothole it, we've identified it, it's a, again, wanna reiterate, it's untreated water. So, it's, it's not a, it's, it's not a, it's not a treated water line. So, the water is coming, uh, untreated to the Benicia's, uh, water treatment plant and there they treat it. Um, still, you're still, you know, cognizant of the line, you, uh, have to pull a encroachment permit with the city of Benicia that I've pulled myself probably four or five while I've worked with them. You pull an encroachment with them, they, the city of Benicia has, you put notes on the plans complying with the, the, the rules and regs that they wanna see. So, you're very aware of the line. Again, they have an easement through our property, through city property, but no, we're not going to, uh, uh, create an issue with the line or do anything that would, uh, uh, preclude the, um, operability of the line through this project.
Okay. Um, how, I'm gonna ask one more question about that. How do you monitor something like that so you don't ding it? I mean...
Yeah, so what we'll do is, we've already done it on, on, in this case, the city during the design of our tentative map had us go out and do, um, potholing and we potholed the both vertical and horizontal location of the line. So, everything is designed based on that, so, uh, anytime you're designing a subdivision, you're always working around existing utilities. So, this is just one, you know, we, we also have PG&E facilities that are running, uh, along the frontage of this project, so we've had to pothole those lines. So, a lot of this project, we've, we've dealt with this actually in two previous projects, this Benicia line, uh, what we call Gold Hill 1 and Gold Hill 2, where the Benicia line and what we do is follow the same, uh, rules and protocol, uh, and compliance with the city of Benicia that we've done on those two previous projects, where we identify both the vertical and horizontal elevation of the project and, uh, we design accordingly so there's no conflicts with the line. And so, we know it's feasible because we've done it twice and, uh, we, we just follow the same, uh, protocol that we followed before.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, thanks.
Mr. City Manager, let me ask, Amy, can you provide any more insight for these questions and these concerns that are being raised? We've heard the developer.
Uh, anything in specifically, any item or general, every? Uh, would you like me to go over options?
Yes.
So, should you choose to approve the project, you do have some alternative actions you can take. Uh, you can, option one would be to direct staff to prepare conditions and return back directly to council, uh, with documents to approve the project and overturn the planning commission's actions. Uh, this would be the preferred alternative. Uh, or you can do option two, which is to direct staff to return to planning commission for action on the, uh, development review, community design plan, and tentative subdivision map, and then, uh, return back to council with documents approving the legislative requests, the zone change and general plan amendment.
Councilman Tim, then I have a couple of questions to, please.
We've got a couple of things, Mayor, thank you.
There's also, there's a third option, like, can I just jump in real quick?
Oh, go ahead.
The third option is you could ask us to come back and have a full presentation, not taking any action tonight and ask, you can bring her back with the developer and make the full presentation. So, you do have that option.
Okay.
Just trying to...
Councilman Tim, please.
Thank you. On option one, where it says direct staff to prepare conditions, what does that mean?
So, uh, because we have recommended denial, we have not prepared a conditions that have been reviewed by the planning commission. So, generally, projects for review, we often have, we have our standard conditions of approval, which are our pretty common zoning ordinance requirements and then, uh, potential special conditions, uh, where, you know, they might not be meeting certain requirements and certain changes we might wanna see, and often that's what is included with the resolution for planning com- for a planning commission with approvals.
So, certain, and I don't mean to interrupt you, but it is late, certain conditions or certain changes, correct? or certain changes, correct?
Yes, so we have our standard conditions of approval, which are design requirements...
Let me be more blunt. I don't like the curve. I drive it every day, I'm Uber grandpa. I go to Green Valley Middle School. Traffic is terrible. Eight o'clock in the morning, three in the afternoon. Any other time, the people that speed out there, most of them live out there, but the curve is terrible. And how can it be mitigated, whether you have houses there or whether you have a commercial property there, if the only inlet and exit is where that curve is? Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm. So, while we can't change the curvature of the road, based on my understanding, with a commercial project, it's possible that the entrance could be in a different location. However, due to the amount of estimated counts of cars and users, that this location is actually the safest location for a residential project.
Okay, so, and this is certainly something we can...
We can definitely look into something with the applicant about making it, potentially making it safer, sidewalks, crosswalks.
Okay, and Mayor, if I can, just, just real briefly...
Go ahead, please.
I hear the schools are overcrowded. The school tells me, no, they're not overcrowded. Builders pay, hang on a minute, I'm just telling you what I'm told. Builders pay $3.36 a square foot, give or take, for school impact fees. You people are very well-spoken. You people are my people. I live out there, and I go to the same places you go to, but I suggest that you also take this to the school board and say, what about this? What about that? Where does the $3.00 and some odd cents go per square foot for school impact fees? Who does that? Also, too, one of the things that, we have, I pulled this up, 143,000 jobs in Slano County right now, right? Right now. In, in the next six years, there's 71,000 more jobs coming. We talk about, we want jobs, we want jobs. Folks, we need places for people to live. Some of you folks are older, some of you folks are younger, so I ask you this, those that, of you that have children, where are they going to live in 10 years? Where are they going to live? Right? And that very, that very well could be, but I would surmise that a lot of them will come back here. People that have parents that are aging in place, where are they going to live? Folks, when you heard tonight, because you sat through everything we sat through, when we changed the building codes, we have a housing crisis. We're talking about tiny homes, 400-square-foot homes. Changing building codes that we didn't used to allow, and the reason is because there's a housing crisis. I am for houses, I am for infill, but I also respect, I'd love to stop out there at a commercial site and take my grandkids in for a pizza or some ice cream. I don't know of anybody that would risk the money to build a place out there knowing that it faced probable bankruptcy in 18 months. What I'd like to see is, we talk about changes, when I heard the developer representative get up and say they had other commercial areas, I'm curious to see, where are those commercial areas? Are they in Cordelia? If the, if that curve is so dangerous for cars to come out of from a residential area, I have to assume you're going to have more cars if you had a commercial area there, so let's talk about the changes. But talk to the school board, speak as well as you spoke tonight, you are very well-spoken. Josh, I've talked to you via email many times, nice to actually see a face to a name. Young man, you're very well-spoken, and I think the people that spoke from the heart that lived there, that bought there 30 years ago, expected something, markets change, general plan, 25 years old, we're getting ready to redo it. It's going to take two, two and a half years and $3 million, but it's starting. So, there wasn't Amazon then, there wasn't DoorDash, there, times have changed, we either change with the times or we perish. So, anyway, I'm tired. I like option one, but I want to know what the changes would be, and you, we might not see you for what, two months, three months, six months, depending where you get planners? I don't know. Mayor, thank you, sir, for allowing me.
My, one of my major concerns is students living in that area having to cross the road, cross the street to get to school and back, and unfortunately, last week, we did the exercise of walk to school, and the number of students out at Nellamundi who actually walked is pretty significant, and those students are in great physical shape, too, because they do what I used to call PE before school really starts. But I'm really concerned about the safety of students crossing the street, and I spent quite a bit of time out there on Sunday mornings, early Sunday afternoon, watching and then driving, and people were behind me because I was doing the speed limit. They were passing me on the curve, and I did it both ways. So, we need to take a really serious look on how we're going to take care of that, assuming that this project moves forward. Mr. City Manager, please.
Well, at this point, it appears that what the council would like to see is the, a project come back to you with all the plans and showing what the conditions of approval would be, so you then can decide whether or not this would be a project that would be approved, or whether or not changes should be made, or revisions should be made to the project. So, at this point in time, this is going to have to be noticed for another hearing in order for you to consider that, because it also will come back with environmental document. I mean, legally, that's, has to happen here. So, what I would suggest here is the council, if that's your direction with option one, would be to come, direct staff to come back with the, a proposed project with conditions, and then you would consider that at that point in time, and then you would decide whether frankly to approve it at that time with conditions, or even at that point, still deny it if you're not satisfied with the conditions that have been proposed.
Rather than closing the public hearing, if we choose to exercise that option, I want to keep the public hearing open.
Well, what I suggest is, because we don't know for sure when this will come back, is that you direct that the hearing be re-noticed, so that it will be a continuation of the hearing, but new notice will be given, so the public will know precisely when this would be heard.
Mr. Mayor, also, and I know Mr. Parsons mentioned possibility of some commercial out there, so I hope that's, that's going to be one of the things that will be brought up back in the, with the option.
So, do we, are we going to need to direct or vote on an option or say no now? What do we do to move forward?
So, if you wanted, if you're going to deny it, you would then adopt the resolution denying the project. But I understand the consensus appears of the council is to have it come back with conditions, so that you can take a look at how the project may be conditioned and revised. And at that point in time, you leave your options open, whether you would approve at that time or deny. So, if that's, if that's where the council wants to go, I would suggest the motion would be simply to direct it back to staff to then come back with a project, a proposed project with conditions, and also addressing the issue of commercial development in the vicinity. And then you would consider that at, when it comes back, and would, staff would have to determine, it would mean this could be prepared and timed for and considered by you.
Yeah, so I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to go ahead with option one and to have all those things covered, and so, then at that time, we can turn it down if we don't like things in safety...
Yes.
On schools, I'm told the same thing as Councilman Tim, and that is that they're actually going to have a problem in some areas of having to close schools because they're in the next six years or so. But anyway, I want to see all of that, and I want to see the safety there, if it can happen. If it can't, it can't be mitigated, then it can't, simply. We know traffic's bad everywhere in Fairfield. We have Interstate 80 running through us and 680 out there and everything else. We can drive, and I drive, in different neighborhoods, including out there, and it's horrible at schooltime, and I know we have been working on some things, and we're going to get some relief here out in that area as well. So, I'm looking forward to that. But on these, it's important about safety, number one. You know, the whole thing with Benicia water, I'm actually seem satisfied, I don't seem to have a, I don't have a problem with that. Doesn't sound like, sounds like they've worked around it before, and I know they always work around like PG&E wires and stuff underneath, so they know how to do that. So, I was satisfied with the gentleman's response tonight. But, so that's, I'm making the motion of option one with all those things that we talked about, looked at, so when we have it up here again, there we go.
One quick comment. I have a very serious concern about overturning a Planning Commission decision unless there are really extraordinary factors that result in that, so. We have a motion, is there a second? Okay, it's been moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion does not carry unanimously. Excuse me, Harry, I do want to reiterate that the people of this...
Ricky, I'm sorry, you're out of order, my friend.
The people of this city do not yield our sovereign...
We are adjourned until November 5th. Thank you very much. Good night.